Please stay standing for one second. We're just going to do a moment of silence for our 41st president who just passed away, George Walker Bush. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the December 5th, 2018 Select Board Meeting. There's no changes to the agenda. Libby, announcements?
Thank you. We have our usual announcement that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. Finance Committee is having a public hearing next Thursday, December 13th, at 4:00 PM in the training room upstairs on citizen warrant articles for the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. And what is not on the agenda but which I'm happy to make an announcement about is our new deputy director, Deputy DPW Director for Facilities started today, Chaz Rogers. He is here, and he loves attending public meetings. You're not going to let us forget that. So we welcome him. That's it.
Rob, you are okay. You never have to come to these meetings again. Thank you, Chaz. Is there any public comment tonight that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. There's no new business that I know of. Do you get approval of the minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Four oh. Penny contracts, anything you want to review?
There's a couple of things I just want to point out that are just a little bit of typos. The first item is a grant for Culture and Tourism with the Mass Cultural Council. There should just be parentheses around the $5,000 because this is a grant we are receiving. Same goes for the second from the bottom, which is Professional Service Agreement. That is actually Health and Human Services, not Resources, and that amount, $44,000, should be in the parentheses as well. That is not actually a state grant. That is a grant from the Community Health Initiative Program through the Nantucket College Hospital. And there's more coming in subsequent meetings that the town has received for various programs, but this is the first.
Libby, I had one question on the CCTV. I don't know if, did you find?
I spoke with David about that, and he is prepared to respond.
Yes, I had a question on the, because we bought the new truck to take care of it ourselves. I didn't know how this fit into, is it the same thing? Is it different? Oh, sorry, you can pull that up. Libby, could you grab that microphone?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. David Gray, so we're director.
For the public.
It is similar, however, it's a lot more detailed. It's something that has to be, you have to have committed manpower to this. This also falls into our, under our consent order where we have to do $100,000 a year for the, for three years. We couldn't commit that much resources to it to dedicate for $100,000 each year, so we have the capability now, but we just don't have that resource right now to be able to...
That makes sense. And then this is also more detailed than what we would do.
Yes, and it's also got to include the DPW too. A lot of drainage work, CCTV work as well with this contract.
Okay. Thank you.
One other comment? I've never, I was interested, the Chapter 91 Waterways License. I don't remember seeing one of these. It's interesting how they, they, it's $6.60 per square foot of ground level structures within 100 feet of the project shoreline. How they come about with a number for that is, was an interesting, I've never seen this. I don't believe in any other time. And it's great to see it, and it's going to good use.
Right. Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Onto consent items. Pleasure with the board.
Like to make a motion to approve consent items as noted with the letters of thanks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that actually, I guess we weren't totally consistent in our categorizing of these things because another gift that we got from that same hospital fund is $98,000 for seven firefighters to receive paramedic training, which is really critical for our budget. So we're grateful for that grant and the other. And Chief is here if there's any questions.
Okay. All right. So those gifts passed. Town managers report?
First up, we have our auditor here, Tony Roselli of Roselli Associates. He's going to take us through the fiscal '18 audit. That audit, that fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. He's going to take us through the audit and the management letter, and I believe there was an audit committee meeting today. The audit committee is comprised of the chairman of the board, another board member, and the chairman of the finance committee. And I'm sure you all talked about the, some of the stuff that Tony's going to take us through.
Thank you. So, yeah, like the town manager had indicated, we had an audit committee meeting this afternoon to go through basically the review of the audit and the results, and had a pretty lengthy meeting, and it was very productive. And we discussed a lot of points and things that will be addressed in future audit committee meetings. So overall, it was a very good process. So this is our sixth audit of the town. And one of the things I just want to start with is, and which I mentioned this afternoon, is I'm very proud of what's happened here. And as an outside person, that, I mean, this whole journey began when Libby came to my booth at the MMA back in 2013 and said, "We need help. We just went out to bid, and nobody wants to bid on the audit contract. Would you be willing to bid on it if we do it again, if we bid on it again?" And at the time, we were very busy, and if we pushed it out to a time where we could bid on it efficiently, I said, "Sure, we'll help, we'll help you out." And when I got here, I said, "What did I just do to the firm? This is crazy." And so there was all, a lot of issues and problems, and everybody knows, so we don't have to bring up what they were. But at that time, there was a plan. A plan got put in place. A new finance director came in in 2014. Policies were putting, put in place. One of the biggest things that the town manager wanted was, why are all the Cape communities getting a AAA bond rating? Why can't we have that? Are we not as good? Are we not as, do we not have reserves? Like, what's wrong? So we sat down and said, "Well, here's what you have to do. You have to put these policies in place. You've got to hit your reserves to this point, and you've just got to show a consistent process." And the town will get there because the town has an enormous amount of equalized valuation, which is the value of the property on the island. You're into the mid $20 billion, which is, I believe, the third or fourth highest in the state of Mass. And that alone is going to drive a very good bond rating. And then once you dovetail that with good reserves and good policies, it's just going to follow through. And we're here. The town is here. About a month ago, the town went through a large process of putting together a presentation for Moody's, and Moody's rewarded the town with a AAA bond rating. So I think that's just an incredible achievement. There's only 15 in the state of, you're the 15th in the state of Massachusetts, and it's something to be very proud about. So I don't know if a lot has been made of this, but I'm going to make sure that people know that it's really an important step, and I think, you know, we should applaud to that, so. It makes my work as an auditor very fulfilling that we came into a situation that wasn't that great, and we were there with the finance team, and we worked together and got to this point. So I just wanted to start off with that because it was really the highlight of the audit. But, so let's talk about economic trends in Nantucket. You can see, we did a snapshot here, last 10 years, and you can see that reserves have steadily increased. Back in 2009, you had under $10 million. That was the, I used that year because that was the high watermark of the economic collapse back then. And since then, the town has steadily increased reserves to the point where you have over $20 million in 2018 with a big jump from 17 to 18. And the good, the really important thing to realize here is that each year, you take money from reserves for capital. So one would think that the reserves are going to go down, but they don't. They, they go up. So you take money for capital, they get replenished. In fact, they've gone up, and you also have levy capacity. So you've walked a really, really fine line of protecting the taxpayer while also increasing reserves, which the rating agencies love, and you can see that they love that a lot because they gave you AAA bond ratings. So this is a really nice chart, and at some point, that's going to level off, but I mean, it's a really, it's a really good trend. Any questions on this particular chart? So how do you compare to, how do you compare to your peer group? Well, I've got there the high-end metric for S&amp;P, the S&amp;P Bond Rating Agency, which is 15%. And the state average is 10%. So your reserve ratio, which is the amount of your reserves divided by your expenses, that percentage is your reserve ratio. The higher that is, the better it is for your financial capabilities. And at this point, you're over 30%, so you actually went above the Moody's threshold in 2018. So again, you're well above the metrics, state average, the S&amp;P, and Moody's. So you're doing well versus your peers. So just to summarize, financial trends are excellent. Your metrics are exceeding all, all your flaws. Your state averages, new growth is at near-record levels, and you continue walking that great line between reserves and levy capacity. Reiterate once again, AAA, one of 15 communities. And one of the things I want you to take from this slide is that the fact that going forward, your interest expense is going to be lower because you've achieved a AAA. So this is actually a cost, not only is this a report kind of management saying, "Hey, you've done a great job," but there's going to be a financial benefit, and that's the interest that you're saving going forward. The higher your bond rate, the lower your interest rate's going to be. So I wanted to make sure that we highlighted that on this particular slide, that it could produce some, some opportunities to even refinance some of your older debt now that you're a AAA. So I know that's something the finance office is investigating with your bankers. So any questions on five?
Tony, can I ask you a question at the bottom? It says, "Important to maintain this momentum." Is that a reference more to the reserve and levy capacity and the process itself as opposed to the growth?
Yeah, I'm not, at this point, I'm not looking for an increase. As a financial person looking from the outside, I think you've hit where you probably should be. That's, and we discussed that this afternoon, that's probably a level you'd like to maintain. So look at, you look at your capital needs, look at your forecasts, decide what you can take from your reserves that will still maintain. I said, the 30% is something you don't want to go below. That's kind of the litmus, is stay at 30%, and you'll be fine. If you can stay there, everyone will be happy.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
But as expenses rise, don't we need some growth?
And you're going to need some, a little bit, as expenses, so if expenses go up, say 10 million, right now, I think you're at about 37 or 8%. It's way, it's way above 30%, so you have a little bit of buffer there. But as expenses rise, you're correct. So if you, say, get to 120 million in total expenses, you're going to need to be that much higher on reserves. So you, and that's what we talked about this afternoon, is just watching the forecasts and trying to stay there. And the finance department does a great job of doing this every month. You know, what are our expenses? What are our revenues? Where are we going to end up? So that when you go to April Town Meeting, you're prepared, do we need to throw that on a bond offering, or can we take that out of, you know, our reserves?
Because if we, if we see any kind of recession at some point where there's a decrease in property values, that's going to affect our entire tax base, right?
It will, but it will only cause a tax, it will only cause a tax rate to go up. It won't reduce your property taxes.
The levy limit stays the same.
Yeah. You can go up 2.5% every year on your levy. So even if your property values decline, you can still go to 2.5. What people will see is a higher, yeah, a higher tax rate.
Which is why the tax rate doesn't really matter that much. And no one believes me, but...
It doesn't. It's, it's just a number. It really, it really doesn't. It's, it goes up 2.5% every year, but it doesn't mean your tax rate went up 2.5% because it depends how your property...
How your property went, your neighborhood, everything else.
Yeah, new growth, everything, so.
But I think your point, though, and I think what you're talking about, Don, I think it's important when times are good to get ahead like this.
Yes.
So that we have a buffer and are still above 30 when times are bad. So, you know, it's not to give the store away when times are good. It's to put stuff, put it aside for a rainy day. And the other way I look at this sort of thing is, you, we improve in one area, and we'll sort of, you know, wobble a little bit in others. So this is an ongoing process. You know, we worked really hard to get here, and it's just as hard to stay here. You have to stay at it every year, and you have to improve the things that you aren't particularly good at or still need improvement. And if we all read that long thing, there are still a few things we can work on.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's constant work.
It is. This town has a lot of moving parts. You have an airport. You have a nursing facility. You have two water enterprise funds. You have a SOAR enterprise fund. You have a landfill enterprise fund. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. In the audit, we include the county. We include the land bank. There's just so many things happening that it's hard to maintain 100% control of all that. So there's going to be areas where it drops a little bit and it falls off, and other areas which are stronger, so. And that's the purpose of these audits, is to point the things out where we can be doing things a little bit better. Okay, before we go into informational items, any more questions on economic, financial? Okay, informational items, a couple of things on the single audit. Because the town is a recipient of more than $750,000 in federal financial funds, you're required to have a single audit every year, and I don't foresee that ever going below The federal government put a new requirement in place a couple of years ago, but allowed auditors some latitude to kind of transition that before they call these things major findings. And that requirement was to establish what's called an internal control framework. So the town has internal control. What this requirement is saying is document your entire process. So it's this very lengthy process about everything that goes into internal control. We have templates and things like that. So back in the spring, we sat with the finance office, and we showed them different ways to do this. And resultant of that is the airport, which is by far your biggest grant recipient, is about a 400-page report on internal control that's going to satisfy the audit requirement going forward. We talked to the school office. Martin from the school, school business manager, was down this afternoon, and he's in the process of doing the same thing with the schools. The schools are much lower in the level of grants they receive. So I'm hoping that he'll be completed by May so that by the end of 2019, you'll have the entire COSO framework implemented in Nantucket. So that's important because if that doesn't get done, then you go back to having a material weakness or a significant deficiency, and we want to avoid that. And I don't anticipate having a problem in that area. The next thing on this list is just the capital asset policy. And what capital assets are, is your equipment, so, you know, bulldozers, backhoes, your vehicles, your fire engines, your police cruisers. It also includes your buildings, your construction, this building right here that was built not too long ago, the fire station. That all has to be recorded for GAAP purposes. GAAP is generally accepted accounting principles, so it has to all be recorded. Back in 2012, it was very messy. There were spreadsheets everywhere. There was no organization to it. There were no inventories being done. So the town purchased some software, began a process of fixing this. It was fixed by 2014. So right now, the town has a very good set of fixed asset records. So what this point is getting to is, do we, let's look at control versus efficiency. And that's what we discussed this afternoon at length, so we don't have to repeat everything here because what, do you want 100% control of your assets, or do you want to forego a little bit of control for efficiency? And the, what the recommendation was this afternoon was for the finance office to come up with a policy that would satisfy, that would satisfy both adequately, and then bring that back to the audit committee for approval. And that's basically where, you know, where that stands, but that was something that we brought to the attention of the committee because I really wanted them to be involved in the decision. So any questions on fixed assets? Nope? Good. Next area is the Nantucket Regional Transit Authority. So what's happening with the NRTA, which I believe all of you are board members, so I'll watch my, I'll watch myself. So the NRTA has employees. These employees participate in your self-insurance fund. Until recently, I believe, they were part of your property liability. The town does process payroll for the authority. So when we were talking about different things like the library, and the county, and the NRTA, this came up, and both myself and the finance director kind of looked at each other and said, "There's some risk there." Because say there's a catastrophic medical situation with an employee that's not a Nantucket employee, but you're part of that fund, you're only insured above $270,000 per catastrophic injury. So the town would be on the hook for that $270,000 if something chaotic happened, something catastrophic happened. So I wanted to just, I'm not saying, hey, I don't even know if it's feasible to go out and change the way it's being done because normally, a regional transit authority services a number of towns. So this is a unique situation where you have a transit authority servicing one town. So I'm not sure how, how to go about addressing that risk, but I wanted to make sure you knew there was a risk out there. And obviously, something you may want to involve legal counsel with and address and review and go through and see what makes sense, you know, to mitigate those risks. Does that make sense to?
Yeah, we even talked about moving payroll, if that makes sense, and what the liabilities are there.
The IRS, yeah. If you're late on filings and you create large penalties for the NRTA, well, they're going to say, "Well, you were our provider. You provided us with the filings." So they could find that the town is maybe reckless, and, you know, so there's some risk involved in that process.
Did you talk about separating their health insurance?
Yep. Yep, the health insurance, property insurance, I believe, has already been separated. There's workman's comp. There's a, there's a bunch of things where you're self-employed, self-funded. So it's not like you're insured and some insurance company's going to pay for it. It's got to be raised by, by, it should be raised by the authority, but they not, they might not have the capability to do it.
Auto was moved as well. That was moved last year. So the finance department and, we're going to talk to the NRTA director and then kind of get back with us, and one of our, next year, one of our meetings, we'll review this at their recommendation. Thanks, Tony.
Okay. Okay, stagnant special revenue balances. I think it was two or three years ago, we had alerted the town to a number of special revenue, and special revenue is outside of the general fund, so it's not part of your appropriation or your budget. It's those special accounts. You get a donation, you get a grant, you get a gift, revolving funds. It's those outside accounts that we noticed there was over 100 of them that just had no activity. And we went back a few years and saw that they had, some of them had not had activity going back to the 1990s. So we alerted the finance office that it's something you should research and determine were there coding errors made, expenses charged to the general fund by accident instead of the special revenue funds? You know, why do you have these accounts? Why are these grants that are 1999 grants, why are they still, still on the books, but they're, they're gone? It's a 1999 grant. So that process is nearly complete. I know that the finance department with the town manager's office went through an exhaustive process. About a half a million was given to the general fund as part of that process. The remainder was, a lot of it was put to use. Department heads did not know that they had gift funds, donation funds, revolving funds because you have some transition in department heads, so the translation is lost. So that process is pretty close to complete and should be completed by the end of fiscal '19. Any questions on, on that?
Nope.
No, you're a good crowd.
How deep do you dive in? When you look, when we look at something like that, how deep do we dive in? Do we check that though, if there is a special fund, do we check that it's being balanced regularly and that everything is, everything's compliant inside it?
Going forward, a report is provided to every department head that says, "Here are all the special revenue funds. Here's what you have available. Do you agree with this, or do you not agree with it?" And then there's a discussion, "Oh, I can spend this on this." So it's a very good process now going forward. It was getting rid of all the old stuff.
Right.
Okay, next item is, you know, I'm not an investment advisor, I'm not a financial, you know, institutional advisor, I'm an accountant, but one of the things I just wanted to put as a reminder, not telling the town where to invest their money, interest rates are climbing, okay? The feds have had a number of actions over the last year that have increased rates. So mortgage rates have gone up, borrowing rates have gone up for your bond issuances. The positive of that is your bank rates for earning interest have gone up. I noticed, I noticed that the town was still in some lower yielding interest rate situation, and the town has accumulated a lot of cash. So this is basically a reminder that you can turn that cash into a revenue-producing asset. Some of these rates are up to about 2% at this point, and not all the cash is investable. You have to look at what your cash flow needs are and whatnot, but there's a good chunk that is investable, and it can boost your interest rates. And that'll just, that'll help out with other things as you move forward. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. Nantucket Electric Bank account, this is something that nobody knew what it was. It had been sitting on the books for a long time. No one knew when it originated. Well, the treasurer did a lot of research on this and found that it looks like it's mitigation money that was received from the old Nantucket Electric Company, which is now National Grid, back in 1993. So this money was put into a bank account under the Nantucket Electric Company's federal ID number, which that company doesn't exist anymore, but it's in this bank account earning interest and earning interest. It's $150,000 right now. And anytime that the town tries to talk to the bank, the bank says, "We can't talk to you because it's Nantucket Electric." And it's like, "Well, Nantucket Electric doesn't exist." And then you try to talk to National Grid, and they don't know what it is, so it's, it's in limbo. So I put it in the management letter. Maybe you can take the management letter down to the bank and somehow resolve this. I believe it's Nantucket money. It's some mitigation money. Nantucket Electric probably did some, some work, ripped up some roads and some sidewalks to lay some cables, and this was the money that was received. I mean, this is before Libby's time, I think.
Uh, no.
No? Oh, okay.
I think that it was, Brian and I talked about this the other day. We think it may have been from the first cable, and, but just as you're saying, it was for road paving and putting back all the roads, and somehow, it probably just never got tapped into to do that, so we have to get it figured out.
Yeah. So best thing is to get to the right people at the bank and not just a phone call. Get to the president or whatever you have to do, just to figure out what to do with this. Otherwise, it's just going to, just sit there, which is, which is unfortunate.
Which bank is it in?
Nantucket.
Is it? Nantucket.
We have some thoughts about how to get our hands on it.
All right, some findings. Payroll testing. So we, and what we do on our audits is we kind of cycle out different tests that we do. So this year, we did a test of I-9 forms, and, and we did a, actually, we did an audit of the payroll files to see if they were complete. So we selected 25 files, and we found that I-9 forms were missing in 11 files, and the state ethics certification was missing in five files. So my recommendation is that the human resources do an audit of the files, a much more comprehensive audit than what we did because it looks like there's a little bit of a... audit than what we did because it looks like there's a little bit of a vulnerability there. And whatever you're missing, maybe have a day or designate a week where people have to come in and update their I-9, get their I-9 forms into the files and, and get their certifications done. That's a test that's done online, which I'm sure you're all familiar with because you should all have taken that test. And she's nodding.
Sure, I did.
Yeah. But it's, it's, it's about a, it's about a 20-minute test. It's, it's not that difficult. If you get the wrong answer, it'll say, try again, try again, try again. It's basically telling you what, you know, what not to do in ethical, to be ethical. So, so again, that should be done, human resources should be done. Hopefully, what we'll do is because that was a problem, we'll do another 25 when we come back in May. And hopefully, it's, it's addressed by then and fixed. So old outstanding receivables, this deals with personal property. A few years ago, there was personal property, motor vehicle and boat that went back forever, back into the 1980s. The boat and the motor vehicle seemed to be cleared up. The personal property still goes back to 1989. We're not going to collect money from 1989 on a personal property. It's not going to happen. In fact, personally, you have no teeth when you're collecting personal property, other than to decline the business permit or take them to small claims court. So it's, it's kind of an inefficient process. So what I had, what I had put in the management letter, which isn't on the slide, but it's in the management letter detail, is the exact process of how to abate those. Right now, it's cluttering the general ledger. You, you go there and we're in 2018 and we have receivables going back to 1989 on personal property. The total amount, I think, is about $200,000 that I'm questioning. So it's not a lot of money in relation to everything. You have an overlay, you have sufficient overlay to abate those. And to me, they're not, I, I don't see how you, you could collect them otherwise. So I would recommend that the collector follow the process that I put in the management letter to clean those up. Basically, you petition the assessor and then the assessor decides if they agree with the collector and then they would abate it at that point and send a certification back to the collector to write them off. Any questions on that?
How current are those? So they, it goes back to 1989?
It was assessed in 1989.
Okay. Okay, so it's from 1989.
So each year, you get a separate assessment. So you've got them going back from, and typically, in most towns, if you go back five years on personal property, that's usually kind of where the cutoff is. Anything before that, to try to collect it is just inefficient. It's just not a good process and causes more headaches than anything. I, I know there's some collectors that are of the mindset that, oh, no, I'm not writing anything off. But you're kind of creating inefficiencies for yourself, despite yourself, where it's just easier to just clean it up. Dedicated bank accounts. So the town has a number of bank accounts and some of them are dedicated for specific purposes, like the ambulance account, the school lunch cafeteria account. And these are not, these are not legally required. You don't have to do this. So what's happening is these bank accounts, the, the general ledger is the true accounting of how much you have for ambulance, cafeteria and, and for the other activities. The general ledger is the true accounting of that, not the bank account. The, the bank accounts, what's happening is you'll pay bills, but then the transfer is not being made from the dedicated bank account to the, to the town's checking account. So cash is fungible, so we look at total cash. So my recommendation was either close these things out and pool the cash or agree them to the general ledger. Just make the reconciliation to the general ledger, which I think is more work. But I gave, I gave the finance office a few different options to avoid these, what I call inflated accounts. So if you look at ambulance, it's, I think it's ambulance, it says it's 4.4 million. We know there's not 4.4 million in the ambulance account. It's, it's much less than that. So, so that's something that, that I'd like to see cleaned up.
And is it saying it's 4 million on the outside account or is it saying 4 million on the ledger?
No, the ledger's probably.
Million something, you said, yeah.
A million something?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ledger's a million something. So what's happened is you've collected the money, but when you spend?
Yeah.
They're not taking it from the bank account because they're looking at cash in total. They're not really, years ago, these, I think these had a purpose years ago, but now they've kind of been left to, to accumulate. So I would, I would think the, the best bet is either use them for what they were intended for or just pool them, pull them together and invest them. Okay, unauthorized signer, there was one confirmation that came, came back with a, an employee that had, that was no longer working for the town. It was during a transition period. It's corrected now. The town has 60 or 70 bank accounts. So this one looked like, looks like it was overlooked, but it's, it's corrected at this point. The other ones were all proper. And, and the employee had just left. It was like, it wasn't like it's been like that for two years. They just left like, like a month or two before we got that confirmation. Payroll, oh, I got payroll test twice, so we can ignore that. Last one, and, oh, actually, that relates to a, that second payroll relates to accrued sick and vacation. So I don't know if any of you recall, about four years ago, we did a huge payroll project and had like 15 pages of findings. All of those have been corrected except for this last item, which is properly accounting for accrued compensated absences, which is vacation and sick pay. It's important to know what, you know, what, what you have available to you and that those reports are readily available. So the town has been in contact with immunist specialist because you do need someone with a specialty immunist to come in and, and address this. It involves tables and some programming and whatnot. So hopefully by, by the end of the fiscal year, it's something that will be, will be finally fixed. And that concludes my.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions, comments? Matt, you got anything?
Nah, I'm all right.
Okay.
Are we good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone, and maybe I'll see you at the MMA or hopefully a bunch of you that come.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment, thank you very much to Tony for his kind words. And really, there's a lot to be owed to our current finance director and his staff. We, if you, if you recall, a few years ago, we were reporting monthly to the board about where we were with our financial issues. That has gradually declined in reporting time to pretty much once a year with the audit. So it's a pretty huge turnaround and we're really proud of our staff and the work that the departments have done to get us here. And Tony has provided a lot of really good advice and oversight and doesn't hesitate to tell us when something's not right and needs to be fixed, so.
So, so one of the things I'll share, when, when the town was having its Moody's, Moody's conference call, the Moody's commented that the town was the only one that they had reviewed at that point in the year, which was back in early October, that had a final report. So Moody's had gone to all these other towns in September, early October, and they said this was the first town that had a final report in the beginning of October. And the reason that happened is because last year, they said you have a draft, you only have a draft report. We'd like to see that final. So we sat down with the finance office and said, let's make it happen. Let's, let's change our schedules, let's speed up the close process. So this is the quickest the town has ever closed. It's the most accurate that it's ever closed. And the finals are all done and they were done quicker than ever. So, so that's just to reiterate, you know, that there's, there's a great team back there and, and they're all doing a nice job.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, next, we've got an overview of the Island Homes five-star quality rating system. Brett Leonardson, our Island Home Administrator, is going to take us through this. This was a report that came out a month or two ago and we asked Brett to come in and explain how it works and what it means and that sort of thing.
Sure, thanks. So I'll, I'll do a little bit of an overview for those here that don't know how the system works and those of you at home also. Okay, so the five-star rating system was devised by the Centers for Medicare Services years ago. Basically, it's a system that the general public can look at grading of nursing homes to try to decipher, since there's a lot of them out there, obviously not on Nantucket, but in general. How they could determine, you know, good facilities, bad facilities, in, in not layman's terms, in just general terms that the general public can understand. It's broken down, I can tell you, like, if you, if you were to ask anybody that works in the industry and knows it inside and out, the system is flawed in some areas that it doesn't really give a true reading of actual quality sometimes. The problem with the five-star rating is when the general public sees this on the CMS website, it doesn't do a lot of explaining and breaking down so they can really thoroughly understand it. They just kind of throw them out there and this is why, but they don't, they don't explain it. So when we have our five-star ratings come out every quarter, I go over with my management team so they know the good talking points, yea or nay, that to really break that down. So if people did ask, they can really explain the nuts and bolts of what feeds into it. So the five-star rating is, obviously, five stars being the best, one star being the lowest graded, is broken into three categories. Health inspections, staffing and quality measures. In, within the staffing, that's broken into three sub-levels, RNs, LPNs and certified nursing assistants. The RN piece, which is considerably higher graded than the other two. So I'll kind of explain where we are. This is, this is the one that hurts, the next slide. But I think as we go through them and I explain more, you'll understand why and it's not nearly as bad as it seems. Our current rating as of November is a one-star facility. Now, in September 2017, we were four out of five. December 17, we were five out of five. In April, we were three out of five. What's changed since then? Well, in April, we dropped from a five out of five to a three out of five because in November, we had, November of 17, we had our annual survey and we, they didn't do too well in it. They got six tags, five of which were minor, and that probably wouldn't have caused the big fluctuation. But then we got one, one tag that was a little bit higher in scope and severity, which caused us to get two stars in our service ranking. But if the survey happened in November, that doesn't get updated till January or February. So in April, when the numbers came out, we dropped from a five out of five mainly because the health inspections went down to a two. Since then, we've kind of, we actually have been stable up until, and, and keep in mind the data that's in these numbers, like the, the one that came out at the, at the end of October, it is only good with data through June of 2018. So the data that they're using is a little bit behind, like a quarter and a half behind, which is good because that gives us a chance to know where we're going to be sitting the next quarter when the data gets updated and everything like that. So the most recent quarter, there hasn't been any new surveys. Our actual year-to-date survey date was November 9th and in November 28th, two weeks, three weeks after last year's survey, they implemented a new survey process and it's taking a lot longer than people thought. And it's put the survey process and the cycle way behind. So even though I was expecting him anywhere from September till, well, it could be February, well, here we are in the middle stream of that and I still haven't seen anything. So, and from what I'm hearing out there, they are considerably behind to the point where if they don't do surveys within 15 months of the previous year's survey in facilities, Massachusetts gets fined. They're, they're taking fines now because they're that far behind. So then I can tell, when we get into the quality measures and all that stuff, I can tell you, in the, in the health inspections on the next slide, I can kind of give you an update of what the new survey process means potentially. So health inspections, we didn't, we, we haven't, there's been no new update. Staffing, we, from last quarter, we were actually a four-star staffing and we dropped to a one. Quality measures, we were four-star, we dropped to a three. But again, this is, you'll see as we go through each one of them, the flaws in the system to an extent. So the health inspections, the health inspections basically is just, every, every time they do an annual survey, we get citations, which are graded by scope and severity. Scope meaning the actual tag that's violated and severity means how bad it was violated, whether it's an isolated case with one resident or potential for widespread or actual widespread or the worst case, actual harm to a resident. So in our most recent survey, we had five tags. And then what we also did is we got a, a sixth tag for life safety, but it was fire drill done at a, a different time than it should have been done. So, I mean, it was just basically paperwork compliance type of thing, very minimal. But the five health deficiencies, state average is 4.9, federal average is 5.8. So we're, we actually would have been right in the middle mix of that. So we actually, for, based on the five alone, if they had all been minor, we would have probably got, done a three star instead of two stars for surveys. But because one of them was a more severe tag, it kind of bumped us down from there. But if you notice, that, that data, and this is to date on the five-star rating system, is only through 11/28/17, which is the date that the new survey process went into effect. They have not published the new survey data because it's, it's not good, in the sense that it's gone from an average of five in the state to an average of between 12 and 13 tags. All minor, but that's kind of what you get, the new survey process is all computerized and it's much more objective. So it kind of doesn't allow people that have worked in the industry to use subjectivity in judging what's good, what's bad. It's just you put the answer in and it spits out a tag. But what's good is if we're on our game, we'll still do okay, I think, because as long as you're at the average or above, you're, you're looking good. So there hasn't been really a change in that. So we're kind of, it really, the new survey process doesn't really change the way they do things. The sampling that they, they look at comes more from resident interview instead of just from the quality indicator mix. And they're much more thorough, but it's, again, it's all computerized, a lot of resident interview, stuff like that, which, that's great because the residents at the facility are really happy, they all love it there. So that'll be a good thing, that'll work on our, our behalf. Staffing. Like I said, the staffing is broken down into three categories, RNs, LPNs and CNAs. RN piece being weighted considerably more heavy than everything else. But I wanted to call your attention to one thing that really sticks out. Within any quarter's reporting requirements, because we have to report through PBJ all of our hours that we log in, not just in nursing, for the entire nursing home, but that's where the hours are, are, are taken from that feeds into the staffing piece. Within the reporting quarter, which the quarter, the most recent quarter they have on file was April, May, June, you cannot have more than seven days in a quarter where you don't have at least one eight-hour shift of RN coverage. In that quarter, we had nine days where we didn't. We missed it by two days. That, not that we didn't have a nurse, an RN. We had LPNs that were highly trained. Where we ran into the problem with the RNs being spread out evenly is two of the three months within that quarter, we had had an RN travel nurse that left the end of April and we hadn't filled it with an RN for May and June. So it left us short on RN. We had LPNs working and if the next screen, you can see the breakdown of that. But, so that's the reason why we went from a four-star to a one-star, because if you look at the total nurse staffing, LPNs and CNAs, it either stayed the same. Actually, RN staffing almost stayed the same. It fluctuated a little bit, but the other two actually stayed the same. So there weren't, there weren't any major changes other than those two additional days without an RN in a 24-hour period. So this is what we broke down to. Now, if you look in the first column, that's our Island Home staffing, the numbers in the parentheses are where we were at the previous report. And then the, the ones that are not in the parentheses are the ones that are most current. So total number of residents, our average daily census dropped from 36 to 31.3. That was by attrition, so we were doing renovations and things like that. More beds came back online in July and our census has been hovering between 36 and 37 again since then. Total number of licensed nurse staff hours per resident per day. One hour and 48 minutes, that's total nurses. If you look, we're still above the mass average and the national average when it comes to, when it comes to nurses. RN hours within that, we were at 20 minutes, about 29 minutes. We were actually, the previous quarter that we were four-star, we were at 24 minutes. Now, that difference is probably mostly due to the drop in census. Because again, even though, right, so, you know, when the census goes down that much, it's going to cause the numbers per, per resident to fluctuate up. RN, I mean, LPN hours per resident per day, one hour and 19 minutes. We actually were running at 54 minutes the previous quarter. So we actually went up. We actually were running at fifty four minutes the previous quarter, so we actually went up. Uh, what, twenty five minutes? Which more would more than cover what we went down in RN coverage. So actually, when you look at nurse staffing in the building, between RNs and LPNs, we actually went up a little bit. The the gross increase, the majority of it was due to the census, but on the LPN line, the jump in that exceeds even what the percentage would be based on census. And then the CNA hours were pretty much about the same, so they didn't fluctuate. So from a staffing pattern, even though our census went down, we had as as many, if not more, nurse hours and the same number of eight hours. The thing that really dinged us to drop us down to the one star in staffing was solely those two additional days that we went without a shift of RN.
Yeah, have you corrected that? Do you have an RN? Do you have enough RNs now on staff?
Well, it's a yes and no. Currently, we're working on it, we did correct it, I mean, at right, the start of July, we had another RN traveler in for July, August and September. So that position was filled and we had a a twenty four hour staff development person come on board, which is also an RN. So for the next quarter, when it updates, our staffing is probably going to go right back up to a four star. Because not only, because the SDC position that also got filled in July was vacant also. So with that and the full time RN traveler being on for the next quarter, I fully expect the the staffing level to go back up to a four star. When they update the data through the end of September.
And the quarter you're in, you still have that staff?
Yes, the RN traveler came to an end. We do have some additional RN coverage, not a full timer. So I'm I'm thinking, without a full timer for two of the three months, we missed it. We're we're filling probably three to four shifts of a five shift week with RN coverage. So I really don't expect it to drop even the quarter after that. We're doing some additional things to try to attract more RNs to the island, we ran an ad in the ANA publication, things like that. So we're we're definitely working on and doing everything we can.
I had a different question, what what's the difference for the CNA hours? I mean, we're a whole a full hour more than the national average, like what kind of services are we providing?
Well, from a service perspective, we're not, we're not, well, it's a good thing you asked that. From a service perspective, we're not providing any additional services per se than any other nursing home that we could potentially compete against, we do the same thing as everybody else.
Is it like more attention to the rest of us?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, with with a higher, a higher thing like that, yeah, you get more attention, you know, you people don't have to wait as much. You know, we typically have people that are Johnny on the spot if someone had to, you know, get assistance going to the bathroom or or being fed or things like that. So that's a good thing, I mean, that all adds to quality. So that's a plus.
Yeah, I would I would think that that would add a lot to the quality.
Right, right. So and then as far as the physical therapy staff hours, that those hours are not staffed just in general, regardless of the regardless of how many residents we have, it's all based on need and case mix. So we we, the 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 minutes per patient day that we have tends to stay very consistent because they only come in and treat the patients when it's needed as opposed to having them there regardless. So that that line didn't really change from the last quarter. So that's that's the staffing one. So you can see, it's not like all of a sudden we were three nurses short or anything. We actually had the nurses, but it's that RN thing that's heavily weighted that really nailed us and dropped us. And the problem is, is that if you score a one star in any of the categories, you bump right down to a one star. So that's exactly why it happened. Second thing is quali- uh, quality measures. Well, the third thing, excuse me. Quality measures is a combination of values of sixteen and twenty four listed clinical measures. Over, they look at the four quarters, but they look at the previous four quarters up to that most, so they'll, their data is going from June, the end of June eighteen backwards a year. And we did have some fluctuations because again, we dropped from a four star to a three star in quality. But I I have some breakdowns, but they look at this data, they take a sampling of categories from the short term residents and from the long term residents and those scores combined. Now, the 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 bad part about this is, for a smaller home like us, the percentages that we trigger in are considerably greatly, more greatly affected, even if we have one resident trigger in an area because we're only thirty five. As opposed to the the state average nursing home is ninety two to ninety four beds. So one resident in a ninety four bed center is a third of the percentage that it would be for a thirty five bed center. But you still get hit with the same percentage. So let's, I'll I'll show you what we got here. Uh, the the other problem with that is, we don't do a lot of short term in and out rehab like a lot of other nursing homes do. We do some, but that's not, it's it's a small percentage and if you don't have a certain level of service. The numbers pop up as unavailable in the short term categories. In which case, then they just use the long term similar categories for your number. So that that too has a negative effect on numbers for us. So these are the scoring groups when you look at the one, two, three, four and five stars in the quality measure category. They look at all these categories and they grade them on a point scale and then they just add up the the points, the higher the points, the better. And one star, I mean, the most recent one, we fall in a three star, which is eight ninety to nine sixty nine. We're actually at nine twenty four, pretty much right in the middle of that. The previous three months, we were at ten thirty one, which is closer to the high end, middle of the four star rating. Uh, and then the five star rating is ten fifty five or higher. So these are the criteria that they look at for short stay quality measures and as you notice, most of our data is not available. And keep in mind that the point systems are all based on where you where you, where your percentage fits in relation to the state and federal averages. So if your numbers are higher than the state and federal averages, you're going to get less points. If they're lower than the state and federal averages, you're going to get more points. So most of the short term stuff that they look at, we didn't qualify for based on numbers. So with it not being available, they will then like for the same thing, improvements in function, they would then go to the long term number and that is complete, the complete category for that, as opposed to a balance of short and long term. Pressure ulcers that are are new or worsened, three point one percent, that's about three percent, you know, I mean, it's three percentage points higher than the roughly than the average in mass or the the federally. However, again, if you have one person that has an open wound, like a Kennedy ulcer or something, that no matter what you do, you're making every attempt at healing and it's not healing and progresses still. It's going to, that that percentage is going to increase and it's not that we're not doing things right, it's some things are out of our control. Some things could be related to the demographics of the population we take in, which you'll see on the next slide. Uh, and then newly received antipsychotic medications, zero percent. That's great, we got some good points there because we're below the state and federal averages. This is the long stay. For those, for each category, if you see two call, uh, two rows, the top row is the data that's that's fed into the five star rating. Which is data through June thirtieth. The bottom row is based on our quality indicators through the end of October. So if you look at some of these categories, I I tried to highlight and read all the categories that we fell above the state and federal averages. A lot of them, when you look at the more updated stuff and, oh, and if if you look at the the categories there, the nursing home long stay residents. The categories in blue are the ones that feed into the red, uh, the the five star rating, the black ones do not. So like for experiencing three, uh, one or more falls with major injury. Through the end of June, we were at three point six, which put us above the averages. For the most updated stuff through the end of October, we actually dropped to three point four, which is within the state average. And that would actually gain twenty more points for us. So when the data is updated through the end of, for the next quarter, we'll actually gain an additional twenty points in that category. Residents with urinary tract infections, at two point nine, we were right around the average. But with the most updated information, we dropped to zero, that'll actually gain us fifty points by doing that, with that with that more updated number for the next quarter. Residents who self-report moderate to severe pain, though we may be triggering higher than the averages. This is a category that we don't really have a control over because it's self-reported pain. And I I really think that that number's always going to be higher if your staff is really in tune with resident pain and treatment of resident pain and and capturing that and coding it right. So that's more of a demographics of the patients that we have in our population. High risk residents with pressure ulcers, we ran about two and a half percentage points on the data through June thirtieth, higher than the national averages. However, if you look, the most current stuff comes down again to zero percentage points. So again, I believe that picks us up another forty points. Let's see, have or had catheter inserted left in their bladder, that's zero, zero across the board. So we're scoring high and, we're scoring the highest in that category already. Residents who are physically restrained, point seven percent was higher than the state and federal averages through June. However, it drops again to zero in the following quarter, so again, that's another forty points. And then people who need, uh, people whose ability to move independently worsened, we actually were just about, we're below the state average, but we're actually anticipating that even lower. However, I can tell you that, again, because the majority of our population is long term. It's more common to see a higher percentage of the residents. So the fact that our percentage is actually lower tells me that my staff is doing a great job enhancing every resident's independence to the best of their, to the best that they can be. Next category, whose need for help with daily activities has increased. We ran just below, we did increase a little bit on the on the most recent stuff. But what's good is, we didn't really, both numbers are within the average range. So I don't really anticipate a a a percentage or or a point drop or gain there, that'll pretty much stay the same. Uh, and then the last category in blue, received antipsychotic medications. Though we are high, we actually are are decreasing, we dropped to twenty four percent in the most current data through the end of October. Um, and again, the antipsychotic medications is the zero that we had on the short term is means that new people admitted didn't trigger for that, which is a good thing. Demographics of the population that need it. I mean, we're, we always operate under gradual dose reduction, so any residents that are on antipsychotic medication, we're always quarterly reviewing to see if we can either decrease or DC it. So the number is what it is and that's based on the demographics. So I anticipate, based on those point category pickups that we're going to see, and there's really not any point drops. There's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty points that we're going to pick up on our next quarter, which actually puts us to four stars, possibly five stars in quality for the next quarter. So we'll actually go up again there. So if staffing goes back to four stars and quality goes to four stars, we'll bump back up to probably a four star facility and then knock on wood, if we have a good survey, we could go to five stars now.
Brett, can I ask you, with the health inspection deficiencies, are any of those directly related to the condition of the facility?
Uh, no.
No, okay. So is that an area that we can improve on or do you see that rating shifting?
No, well, you know, I mean, I think at this point, life safety, the life safety portion of the survey, which happens either at the time of survey, there's a life safety specialist does it, or they usually come like a week after. They are well aware of the fact that the building's old and we're doing everything we can to try to do improvements as we go along. I know prior to my tenure, there's, they had done a lot of work keeping up on things and, you know, I I don't right now see of any problems, I mean, it's, we're not really, but we're not violating any codes. I mean, obviously with a, you know, with us doing work on, you know, the projection of potential new building and renovation, major renovation. There's, there will be things that would have to upgrade to current standards that may have changed, but right now, we're okay. I mean, building and and op- operational things being thirty years old, that doesn't mean that tomorrow something couldn't happen. But as of right now anyway, knock on wood, we're we're holding our own and I don't anticipate any big problems there. Like even last year, the life safety tag that we did take revolved around a fire drill being done over the four quarters on first shift. They're supposed to fluctuate the times and there were like three of them that all happened at ten thirty in the morning as opposed to one or two or nine or, so they didn't like that. So it was a minor like B level deficiency that, you know, it's it's very minor, but it is what it is. But no other issues really in that respect.
So is that something that we can change for next time? Or how do we, I I guess my question is, how do we get the health inspection deficiencies?
Oh, cool.
The rating itself up or the
Oh, well.
Fire alarm, is that something that next time it's noted that it's done differently?
Uh, yeah, well, we immediately upon getting cited for that, we actually implemented a system where the times will all be staggered. So he has a schedule, actually, we we just implemented probably about four months ago, a new preventive maintenance system called TELLS. That's all computer generated where you load all the equipment, fire drills, all that type of stuff that you have to do in there. And it'll automatically randomly schedule times and every week, Monday, you come in, you print up a work list. And it'll tell you what's due for that week, what's due for that month, quarter, so on and so forth. And it's a great tracking system to stay on top of things. So it's kind of like foolproof at that point, assuming they just go in on Monday and print out their work list and then that's what they do over the week. You know, as their functional stuff. For the for the surveys in general, the new survey process, again, it's, I went through it unfortunately. Right before I came on board here, about a month and a half before. And from how they go about it, it's not different. But again, you know, we, subjectivity, when you do a survey like that, is, could be a good thing or a bad thing. You know, any administrator will tell you, they always wish that the old survey process was less subjective because if you have someone that's it's awful to say, but if they're in a bad mood, it might not bode as well for you as if they're in a good mood and they find the same thing. Opposite end of the spectrum, this system is completely objective at this point. Because when it went into play, there wasn't a ton of training for the surveyors ahead of time. So they kind of were learning the process as they went, I mean, I can definitely see probably in the long run, after a year or two. They will figure out how to build a level of subjectivity into it, knowing how their answers at the input affect everything. But at that point, might come a little bit later, you know, so being objective, you know, that's, that can be a bad thing too, because, you know, there might be a very minor issue that a surveyor would say, you know what? One resident day out of umpteen hundred in the course of a month, this happened, it's not a big deal. Clearly, it's not a procedural or process thing, that's an error. And maybe, you know, not cite you now, if they plug it in the system, you get cited, which is why the number of survey tags in general went up. I think that we're doing, we're, we're, for all those little oversight. Keep in mind that of the five tags that we took last year, other than the one that was more serious. The other four were mostly documentation type of things, which that's typically what they are. From that perspective, I think in general, we're looking pretty good, myself and the director of nurses, Heather, Frances and the nurse managers have been doing a lot of work going through and doing record checks and things like that to make sure the information flows neatly and little things like that aren't things that the surveyors are going to get hung up on. And that's a great start right there. We've done some work with the physical plant as far as, you know, stripping and waxing the floors and the hallways and everything. And the renovations that we did earlier on in in the year that makes the building present better. And sometimes, you know, small building like like us, a normal survey in a hundred bed building might take three to five days. Probably the latter of that, for a small building, that's only a day and a half. And you'd be surprised how much the presentation of the building and what they see within the first two hours can dictate the flow of how the survey goes. So my team is really survey ready at this point to make sure everything looks presentable. And when they walk in, they see a well organized facility, people know what they're doing, it looks presentable, that is a great start.
When is your next rating? When will it come out?
Uh, the next, the next rating should be out, uh, January. And it'll be based on data through September thirtieth. But like I said, I mean, I, the hard copy data for the, at least for the quality measures, shows that we're going to increase greatly. And I know the staffing is going to increase greatly because of our our RN coverage. So the two things that kind of went down a little bit. Like the three, going going from a four star quality measures, the last previous quarter to three star now, didn't affect our total star rating. It's the staffing being down to the one because of those two additional days of no RN coverage. I mean, nine days out of ninety one.
Yeah, Matt, you have a question? Yeah, would, forgetting the stars, looking at all this, what's your biggest challenge operating that facility?
The staffing, nurse staffing, we we have a, we have the the CNA staffing, we have the all the other ancillary staffing, that's not a problem. Just attracting nurses, I mean, we're still running with two positions, one of which is filled with a traveler and the other which I'm hoping will be filled with a traveler come, it's tough getting travelers through the holidays. You know, this one that left in September, it just happened to be at the right timing that the next three month sign on takes them through the holidays and it's, they kind of like the travelers, a lot of them dry up around the holidays. And then I'm expecting that after the holidays, the three companies that were, that we have contracts with will start finding people and we'll, we'll get another traveler. And then I'm expecting that after the holidays, the three companies that were, that we have contracts with will start finding people and will, will get another traveler out here. But best case scenario, I'd love to be able to reap the benefits of these ads that we're running and stuff and maybe attract staff nurses that. Will, you know, work and live here and it won't be a temporary situation.
Right.
Cause a temporary situation also costs us more, obviously.
And Brett, what are the key factors to attracting RNs here?
Well, I mean. From a staffing perspective, uh, I guess I could look at it very similar to. What I had to deal with when I was looking at the job here. Nantucket is a great place to live and work. The trade off of the salaries, you know, with the unions and with the cost of living. Salaries are a little bit higher than on the mainland, that's a great thing, benefits are excellent. However, the, the housing itself is the difficult thing. You know, um, we can't offer housing assistance per se to people coming on board as town employees because of the union, because they could always say, well. You know, if you can offer it for the RNs, why aren't you offering it for this category and that category? So that's probably the biggest thing, because the cost of housing outweighs the additional cost and pay, even though the benefits are great. So a single person, single nurse moving to the island to work here. It's a tough sell from a financial perspective. Whereas if I could, if, if a miracle happened and I found, uh, two travel nurses. That were, say, husband and wife or something, and both of them were nurses. And two of them could share expenses of living together or anything, makes it much more reasonable, you know? So that's what I'm holding out for, and I do have a lead on a situation like that, but I don't know if it'll come, I'm hoping it'll come to fruition, but.
Yeah.
I'm working on it.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet.
It's the same story. Yeah.
It's tough, I mean, and like I said, it's just the fact of the matter is it, 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 it's for a single person, which to tap into some of the younger nurses graduating from nursing school and stuff. Being single, coming here, it's, it's, it's a little bit more difficult to make the finances work because of the cost of housing. I mean, I'm sure we could probably find something that would work for them as far as being around, it's just the cost is, is up there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, and again, I think that's a demographic that gets left.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, I think you're gonna run into that in almost every category.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Brett. The next item we have is our public works director is gonna give an overview of the environmental monitoring program at the landfill.
All right, we'll keep it brief, I only have a hundred and twenty-five slides. Just kidding. Uh, so this is a, a presentation that was given back in, uh, two thousand seventeen in November. Essentially, an overview of the environmental monitoring program associated with the landfill. I'm gonna go with a very, uh. We'll touch on a number of different things, kinda break down the program summary. Uh, we have numerous things happening at the landfill, all listed here. From take it or leave it through C and D, leaf and yard waste, uh, MSW. Uh, the materials recovery facility, other items, and, uh, under landfill operations, one of them happens to be groundwater monitoring. The site itself includes the DPW campus, uh, three separate entrances, one, uh, off of Maticket Road. Um, the third being DPW offices, the second being the shelf, uh, shell drop off area. And the first being, uh, the entrance into the landfill facility. So generally, the facility is laid out with the materials recovery facility and the residential drop off area. Uh, the scale house, the compost facility, uh, the biofilter, the leaf and yard waste, uh, drop off area. And C and D and other, uh, materials. Essentially, this polygon here is the original unlined landfill cell. Uh, which also includes some reclaimed soil, uh, that's stockpiled, uh, in and around that same area. Uh, the area off to the west, uh, in this general area includes, uh, what we call landf- uh, this is the active landfill. Uh, this is, uh, landfill cell two, two A in the front, two B in the rear. Uh, and this area here is, is generally where the newly constructed, uh, lined landfill cell, uh, three A is located. Uh, there's also some residual soil piles that have been reclaimed as part of the mining of the original unlined cell. Uh, located in a couple of different areas. And so what you see around the perimeter is these series of well points, uh, that have been installed essentially around the perimeter. The blue lines shown here essentially show graphically the, uh, rough, uh, understanding of the groundwater flow. Uh, from east to west towards Long Pond. And of course, along, uh, what separates the landfill from Long Pond is this very large extensive, uh, vegetated wetland system. So tonight, I just wanna touch on, uh, the landfill environmental monitoring program, uh, the DEP requirements, the, uh. What's being re- reported as far as results, the trends and nutrient testing. Should be noted that the nutrient testing that we've taken on is elective. Uh, it's not part of the state's requirements. This is something that I recognized, uh, early on as a need to answer the ongoing question of. Uh, nutrient impacts, uh, to Long Pond and Greater Maticket. Uh, when, uh, the discussion about sewer-ing of Maticket, uh, which has come up in the past, is, has. Been answered with information that wasn't necessarily local data. It was based on information, uh, and formula, uh, through the SMS study. Uh, information from, uh, that was extrapolated with, uh, information from Cape Cod. So we wanted to gather our own data, uh, to be able to inform future reports to determine whether or not, uh, the landfill is actually having. A nutrient effect on Long Pond and Greater Maticket. So we could skip through some of the slides here and get to, uh, the meat here. The DEP requires, uh, landfills, uh, to have monitoring and reporting. Specifically to protect impacts to human health. Uh, here, our program includes groundwater monitoring, uh, twice a year, surface water monitoring twice a year. And also quarterly sampling of gas. Uh, so we have six deep groundwater sampling locations, three surface water sampling locations and thirteen, uh, gas sampling locations. And each one of those samples, uh, go, the groundwater and surface water have various criteria to follow. All based on DEP regulation. Uh, same with the, the landfill, it's just, you're sampling for different components, uh, but it's all dictated by DEP. Uh, reporting standards are within sixty days of sampling. Uh, samples are taken, uh, as they were today, uh, by our consultant, CDM Smith. Uh, so they have two folks come out, uh, physically occupy, uh, the, each location, take samples with, uh, standard protocol. Those samples then got taken off island, uh, get sent to the lab and, uh, a processed. And then the report of those results, uh, is made, uh, made to us. We review it and ultimately sign off that, uh, the report has been received. Uh, then it goes to DEP and that report then gets, uh, uploaded, uh, to our website. So, uh, that was another thing that I've initiated since, uh, coming here was making sure that our reports were, uh, trans- transparently, uh, reported online. And accessible to everybody. So oftentimes, people will read the reports, um, and sort of interpret the results or try to come to their own conclusions. So I've taken lots of time to talk to interested parties, um, and try to explain. You know, these results are from, uh, wells that are directly adjacent to an unlined landfill cell. Uh, that have received materials for decades. Uh, that material has combined with other materials that have been brought to the same site. And, uh, with stormwater, uh, with rain, has flushed, uh, mater- the, we have the ability to flush those materials right into the groundwater. And those, uh, same materials have, uh, migrated, they start to migrate. So this is not unlike any other unlined landfill cell, uh, which, uh, the history of which I skipped over, but largely. Landfills began in wetlands. And the point being that, uh, the results are matched against DEP drinking water standards. Back to, uh, their potential impact on human health. DEP is monitoring, uh, the results of these samples, uh, specifically to ensure that they're not being, uh, taken up in wells. Uh, or in specifically in the environment, but mainly through wells. So people are not ingesting this, uh, individually. The nutrient testing that's, uh, been electively done, um, has just started. We had three samples in fiscal eighteen, uh, we've committed to six samples in fiscal nineteen. And, uh, those results, uh, are expected to be annually, uh, updated and trended, uh, compared to the previous year. Uh, each year in March, so that's ongoing. I would say that, uh, another point of reference here is that Natural Resources, uh, who's been researching the ponds, uh, around town. Uh, over a longer period of time, are reporting to us that, uh, Long Pond, uh, is the only pond that has actually, has shown measured improvements. Uh, specific to, uh, nutrient levels going down. Whether or not that's directly attributed to the ongoing mining of the old landfill. Or the fact that we're no longer, uh, bringing, uh, fresh, um. Landfill material or solid waste residuals to an unlined cell that everything's being, uh, brought to lined cells, still remains to be seen. I would say that. Their results specifically show that they have, um, uh, the bentic in fauna, uh, the. Uh, animals within the soils in the, in the ponds are showing a rebound, um, again, and the measured. Uh, the measured nutrient levels within Long Pond are dropping, which is all good things.
Did I, do I remember that, didn't you have a, some leakage that's, that was flowing in that you guys blocked up too? Was there a, you know, a, a pond or a secondary pond?
Yeah, so there was, uh, two issues with, uh, with ponds, uh, that were found. One was a discharge stormwater system, if I go back to the map to show you. Uh, we have a stormwater system, uh, associated with the, uh, the, the landfill operation. This settling pond along the property line here, there's some internal trenches, uh, along the leaf and yard waste collection area. Uh, and composting, uh, processing area, and then there's a large pond, uh, at the, at the foot of some reclaimed soils that had been mined out. And then finally, a, a finishing pond, uh, that essentially the entire system drains to, uh, before discharging, uh, into the wetland. When I came on board, there was, uh, the, the discharge, or the discharge, um, from the pond was direct. Uh, someone had excavated, uh, this, uh, and this completely open. Uh, so we dealt with that immediately. Uh, two things that happened, this berm, uh, was closed up. And essentially, uh, only discharges either by overflowing or by infiltration, uh, at this point. And secondly, the entire perimeter, starting at the pond and coming around this entire wetland edge, uh, was, uh, reinstalled with. Uh, silt fence and hay bales. So that was, that was, uh, necessary.
So that could have led, that could have contributed as well?
It certainly could have.
Okay.
Definitely. So since then, there's been lots of activity with regard to, uh, and eye for, uh, improvements to stormwater. To specifically talk about, um, managing better the nutrient levels, uh, associated with the leaf and yard waste volumes. Which, to me, I've, I've really never seen the, the, the sheer volume of leaf and yard waste ever, uh, from a town this size. But I recognize that the landscaping and gardening, uh, industry here is substantially different than I've ever seen before. That said, we're managing this, uh, better. Uh, the compost that's being created is extremely improved, uh, from a year and a half ago. Um, and that's really from a commitment from Waste Options to improve their processes and, uh, bringing new equipment on to screen better. So the, the product, if you're, if you're in, into compost, uh, there's, there's two specific streams coming out now. One is, uh, they're actually seeking, uh, organic certification for, which is, uh, pure leaf and yard waste. Uh, mixed with, uh, ground wood waste from the, uh, C and D operations. And the second one is the, um, compost directly from the, uh, composter facility, uh, which includes, uh, sludge from the wastewater treatment operations. So there's two specific different streams. Again, those are, uh, we've worked hard to, to be able to get, uh, the majority of, uh, the plastic and glass. Uh, that was tainting, uh, that, that product, specifically the, the composter product, uh, when I first came on. Uh, we've had actually a, an open session in this room with, uh, interested parties to talk about not just the landfill monitoring program. Uh, and its results, but since then, we've also talked about, uh, the future of the landfill, the, the current operations. And, uh, s- getting some feedback from the, from the public about some of the things they'd like to see in the future. I'm not sure if there's any, uh, do you see some people that have participated in those sessions here tonight? Don't know if the board or anyone else might have some questions, I'd be happy to try to answer tonight.
Rita, you got any questions?
Um, I do have a question about the organic and the compost. Do they look for any traces of pesticide or fungicide? I know some of the woods, like the pallet woods, um, have been treated for, um, pesticides and things like that, basically in, in transit to keep bugs out? Is that, does that come up in the organic testing?
So, uh, right now, I know Waste Options is seeking a path to be certif- become certified. I don't know all the specifics regarding the testing to get to that. Uh, I will say that pressure treated, uh, materials are not, uh, part of our stream. Uh, that stuff would be removed specifically as C and D.
Okay.
Matt, Dawn? Anybody from the public, comment? Bobby?
What are the results of the water test compared to now, compared to where they were a year ago? Or how long have you been testing from these test wells? Is it getting better, is it getting worse, or is it staying the same?
Sure, it's a good question. Uh, so the tests do fluctuate, um, just like the groundwater and, and, uh, status of the landfill itself. There's certain areas that, that get opened up as part of the mining, uh, whether or not that, uh, exposes areas to get further flushed from rainwater. Or, uh, new combinations of materials, uh, that we haven't seen before. Uh, there's also, so, uh, there are, there's trends that we can certainly look at. I, there's a litany, if you've ever seen one of the reports, which I'm sure you've seen, um, these, there's a litany of, um, sampling, uh, compounds that they look at under the regulation. I'm happy to, uh, to meet separately to go through that stuff. But the, the point is that this is reported to DEP. We've had, uh, several conversations with our section rep, uh, to find out from them. Uh, if there are any specific things that they are concerned about that we ought to be, uh, paying attention to. And frankly, uh, there are none, uh, which is, again, that's, that's an important thing to state, because when you read through these reports. Um, as I mentioned, the benchmark is against the drinking water standards. And, uh, so we're not necessarily drinking out of the adjacent swamp, uh, or the groundwater directly adjacent to the landfill. directly adjacent to the landfill, which seems sort of obvious. But it's important because if there are, or if there were houses with private wells in certain radii from the landfill, then we would be standing up straight and really paying attention to making sure that there were no direct human health concerns. So the point is that the, regardless of where the current trends are, the source would be the landfill itself. The, the end of the permitted mining is the end of fiscal 19. Right now, we are planning to begin prep for capping of the remainder of the unlined landfill. So in a short window of time, you know, probably a five-year window, we're going to be capped. So the, the idea would be whatever's in the ground is going to remain there or dissipate through the years, but no further flushing from the surface would occur. So, and just to reiterate that, this portion of the landfill, the remaining unlined cell will be capped in the short term. The two active cells, landfill cell 2A and 3A, 2A, 2B, and 3A, these are lined cells. So anything that hits these, as far as rain, these two cells have a system that collect the runoff, the leachate, in the front tank. Cell 3A, that's just finished construction. When that comes online, the runoff from that rainfall over the landfilled residuals will flow into this tank in the front. Both of those tanks are, have its leachate removed by the wastewater folks and treated at the plant.
Listen.
Good evening. What is the status or the timing of the nitrogen contribution from the landfill going to be developed so that the model can be rerun with the Nantucket landfill contribution?
So any of the nutrient results that have already been published have been provided to the SMAS folks to be used in their recalculations. I can't speak specifically to the schedule of that. The town manager may be able to. That's being done through the Natural Resources Department.
And you've provided three testing dates from 2017, well, whatever the fiscal year is, and three from this year, six from this?
The SMAS folks, I know, have been put directly in touch with our CDM Smith consultants. So I'm not sure if they're keeping abreast of every ongoing nutrient sample they take, or if it was to a specific deadline for the information. But as I've shared before with you and others, you know, we're not, we're not necessarily relying on those specific, very minimal and only recent tests to just inform any specific future decision. We believe through, and I think Natural Resources put a fine point on it and said, until we have probably 10 years' worth of nutrient data, you know, who's to say really what the trend's really going to be?
What were the months, though, that you did test in 2018?
So I believe, yeah, I believe they've been during the growing months. We tried to steer clear of, you know, the frigid cold where we didn't expect to see any high numbers.
I saw a report for a March collection and a May collection on your website. That's all I saw.
Sure. So I know the, there are more, and I believe the next report will be published that shows the annual results combined with trends from last year is due in March. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought that was just phase one of your 142 slides, so I do have some more questions.
Sure.
Just sort of a quick synopsis of some of the additional slides we have, where there were slides for monitoring results and then monitoring trends. When, when I read through the results, it looks fairly positive, like we're in a good position. And then when I read through the trends without really knowing what I'm reading, it sounds like there's exceedances. Is that?
Oh, there's exceedances every month, or every, every test. It really just depends on what was put here and what has, you know, since leached out. And I'm happy to meet with you specifically to go through any of those, and really just to review what an exceedance is, what it means, and to, and to review those trends. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be great, so I understand exactly what I'm reading there. And then in one of the supplemental slides, you had a breakdown of the things that are being recycled. And it looked like roughly 25% of what's going into the digester isn't getting recycled. Is that what's going into the lined landfill cell?
So the only thing being landfilled is residuals from the composter. So yes, anything that is not able to be composted in the composter becomes residual from that whole operation. That is the only thing that gets landfilled.
Okay. And so that's what they, it looks like Waste Options was sort of counting as everything, the 75% going through the composter that's getting recycled is compost, and then that 25% is landfill.
I think that's based on some early, like, 2016 data. As you know, we've just recently completed a waste characterization with some WPI students. And we're also looking at the trends from 17 and now 18 with our new recycling solid waste coordinator. So there's a, there's a number of trends that we're looking at individually and more recently to make sure that what we're tracking, and frankly, what we're messaging to the public, is trying to reduce what we're landfilling.
Okay. So there's more detail coming on that in that area?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just in your future conversations, are you guys discussing impacts if the sea level rise and, you know, sort of the modeling? Is this the best location to be doing this in the next 30 or 50 years? Is that some of the?
We are having discussions with, specific to the onsite, this developed area, and specifically the lowest portion of that, which is this rear area. As you've seen in the past year and a half, this area has flooded two or three times. And not unlike some of the other low-lying areas that have been subjected to substantially high groundwater, the highest groundwater ever recorded on island this year, and some really severe rains. So that combined with some, I would say, clearly undersized stormwater systems that, that support this area, that has led to some shutdowns and closures of the CND facility. What we're currently working on with a consultant, actually with some assistance from Nantucket Land Council, is to do an analysis of improvements to the onsite stormwater systems just for this side of the site. That will be something that we could take care of, some low-hanging fruit, and do some real improvements in the short term. It's also going to be looked at as, as we look at a closure plan for the unlined original landfill cell. As we look at that, that will design, and the engineers will have a approved stormwater system just to handle the runoff coming off that, off the closed landfill. So, and then on the DPW side, with the proposed improvements to the facility that are coming, that also will be implementing some modern stormwater facilities there, where right now there are none.
Right. I guess the reason I'm asking, you're adjacent to, you know, quite a bit of wetlands. And when you look at the flood maps, you see a lot of those wetlands become permanently wet. And so I just want to make sure that it's entered into the, it's factored into the long term.
Specific to sea level rise, I would say.
Or increased flooding, or, yeah.
If we need to save property elsewhere to move operations. I mean, I think that that's something we really need to think about with, like, the remaining land that's by the airport, if we ever need to move partial operations or have a transfer station.
Sure.
I think that needs to be in the thought process.
Be a large parcel.
Yep. That is definitely part of the conversation. I think in the, again, in the more immediate future, we're taking a look at the lowest area to see if we can improve not just the treatment with an eye towards nutrient removal, but also to try to address the volume concerns.
Right.
And just a comment as well, that one of the action items in the work group working on the environmental strategic priority is to look at the sort of environmental health in addition to, and looking at how we can evaluate the ponds, the wetlands for environmental health in addition to, or above and beyond, the drinking water quality and the TMDLs and things like that. So it doesn't answer the flood, sea level rise, but it definitely is part of going above and beyond when it comes to looking at the runoff from the landfill.
Bruce?
Thank you. Just two questions and kind of an offshoot of the presentation. We've noticed that there's a kind of a work group looking into the future of waste management, the future of the landfill. We haven't been able to see any of the ongoing reports or memos, if there are any of this, but we're very interested in that, especially the potential other technologies that might be employed for managing waste on Nantucket. So we would like to find out how we can find out more about that, perhaps participate in it. Second part is, I noticed that one of the citizen warrant articles submitted for consideration at the annual town meeting creates a solar overlay district at the landfill. And my question is, if we were to look at solar for the capped portion of the landfill or other areas of landfill, it's very common to do. We've seen it all over the country. But we're also finding that as the technology for handling future waste might be limited by designating just solar, or just having an area designated for solar that would preclude improving technologies that don't necessarily include that, or technologies that are compatible with solar, but the area is consumed by the solar panels. And I wanted to see if that was on the agenda to be discussed or considered before we go forward with creating a solar overlay.
I'll let the town manager deal with the first question, but I'll take the second question and say that the capped landfill is the capped landfill. That area will be designated, it will be capped, and it's going to be there as far as the state is concerned, permanently. So that space specifically would be the area that, that would be considered for solar use in the short term. What happens with the rest of the site is way too soon to talk about.
We, we don't have an active working group yet. It's more of an internal group that's gathering information. We don't have any technologies that have been identified as viable at this point. There's a lot of research going on with our consultant, George Aronson, and limited staff gathering. But when it's time to invite other people in and have discussions, we certainly, definitely want to do that, but we are not there yet.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Sorry, is the board have any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Libby. We're going to move on to the select board reports and comments. First item tonight is a continued review and finalization of RFQ for adult-use marijuana, retail medical marijuana dispensaries. We had a lengthy conversation at our last meeting, a week ago, good hour and a half about this RFQ. I thought we did a pretty good job of kind of working through some of the issues. Does the board have any, any questions or anything they want to add? Or, to me, it looks pretty good. I think, Libby, if you want to talk about what you've done in the process, I know you've worked a lot, worked a lot on this.
Yep. So there's a revised cover sheet in your packet. Since your last meeting, I spent quite a bit of time reviewing the comments that came in from others, including Attorney Cohen, and working on whether or not we could work them into the RFQ. Some were worked in, some were not, for various reasons. The timeline has been revised a bit to condense it a little. And in the agenda meeting today, I have in there that the proposals are due December 21st, but I was reminded that actually it's December 28th that the board agreed on. Nonetheless, the compressed timeline hopefully will work. It's kind of aggressive, but we'll hope for the best there. I don't know if you want to go through the redlined draft of the final RFQ or the post-community agreement, but basically, it's a lot of, you know, sort of legal fixing up of the document. And then we were going to get one of you to be formally designated to be on the review committee. I'm working on getting the meetings set up. They're going to have to be publicly posted, rooms reserved, minutes taken, all of that. So we're trying to get that all organized. There's going to be an ad in the paper tomorrow that directs interested parties on where to obtain the RFQ. If you are interested, you must sign in for it. In the event that there are addendums that need to go out, we need to know who took it out. So that will be available online by, I think by Friday or hopefully tomorrow. It's in the paper tomorrow. I not, wasn't sure when it was getting online, but there, there's a link in the notice, and people just need to go to it and find out how to get it.
I think I'd like to hear from the board if they liked, our biggest discussion was about the location proximity and how to define that. Are we happy with how that was written up?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I am, yeah.
Okay. We spent the most time on that.
Yeah.
Anything else that stood out?
Just some numbering issues that might get cleared up, typos. I noticed, I don't know if those will get cleared up, Libby, in the next round, but there's just some.
Yeah, the numbering all had to be redone.
Okay.
And I am not, you know, I, I don't think I printed out the final, final that's in your packet. There's so many drafts that are going around, it was getting a little bit confusing. But yes, we'll make sure the numbering is all set.
Okay. So are we, are we good with this RFQ?
Yeah, I'm happy with what it is.
I thought Rita agreed to be the representative.
Yeah, I was going to get to that. I was just trying to get to RFQ. Do we want to make a motion to finalize this?
Yeah. Motion to finalize the RFQ as the final draft.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then you want to designate Rita as our?
Motion to designate Rita as the select board rep on the review committee.
I'll second it.
Okay. Matt will second that. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Extra service?
Looking forward to it.
And just to be clear, the due date will be the 28th.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the HCA, did we have to, or is that, were we approving RFQ and HCA?
Libby, would you like a motion on the HCAs as well?
Yes, and that, that's, you know, the, the standard template, subject to potential negotiation.
So motion to approve the standard HCA template.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any, anything else we need to go over with that, Libby? Any direction, motions?
I just had down to review the final RFQ. The HCA, the HCA, the rise timeline and the membership. So I, I don't have anything else unless anybody asks questions.
Okay. I'm fine.
No, no, looks good.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Number two, discussion regarding comments to zoning, Board of Appeals, and Surfside Crossing 40B proposed formal housing restrictions. I, sure, I mean, we've already.
Thank you very much for revising the timeline. That's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, discussion on the Surfside Crossing housing restrictions. I, I thought we should have a discussion, even if it's a brief one. We've analyzed this through our different letters to the ZBA, every angle, whether it's water quality or environmental aspects. And then the housing one didn't really. it's water quality or environmental aspects, and then the housing one didn't really, their proposal, as brief as it is, didn't really, our last letter, this came up afterwards. So I just thought, you know, NPDDC has discussed it. I think we should have a discussion whether we decide to write, send a letter into the ZBA. We can talk about that. Tucker's here to walk us through any of it. So everybody knows, I sat with Brooke and Tucker with the applicants months ago, maybe two or three meetings, about the restrictions. And I'm not, and still not as educated on this as Tucker and Brooke, but I didn't represent the select board, but I pretty much just said if there's, if this is going to happen, I would like to see it to help out the year-round community as much as possible. So I was pushing for some type of restrictions. And so we asked for our suggested income restrictions. I believe right now they're saying that's not on the table, but I would still like to see it. Do you guys have any questions or thoughts before we have Tucker come up and just kind of, kind of walk us through the 30 and the 15?
Sure. Well, from the beginning, when I saw this proposal, a concern in my was if it is going to happen, that these condominiums could easily get sold to non-year-round residents very quickly within the price point and if there were no restrictions on being able to rent them, income, so forth. So I think that it is a step in the right direction to talk about making them completely available and only available to people with some kind of year-round requirement. And there's a massive need for that even without income restrictions.
Right. Yeah, and this discussion is much like, you know, do we love condos or not? It was more of, if this happens, what kind of restrictions would we like to see regardless of what goes there? Tucker, do you have anything you'd like to, we should know to help our discussion?
Thank you, Tucker. Holland Housing Specialist. So the board will recall that you had originally touched on this topic in your original July 13th letter last summer and encouraged applicants to think creatively about how this development might serve the year-round community better. And so, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, the applicant more recently came back with this outline of how the, what otherwise would be the market rate condominiums in the project could serve the year-round community. In your more recent comment letter to the ZBA, which again addressed a number of different areas, you did speak to particular aspects that the ZBA should pay attention to as they work through this with the applicant, where there should be no or very limited short-term rental opportunity, no subleasing, no ability for future HOA to change these restrictions, the right of first refusal to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or other entity if a permanent deed restriction can't be put on with respect to limiting them to year-round community members. So a number of different considerations, and I think those are really the main issues in trying to turn their bullet-pointed principles into actual mechanisms with teeth and enforceability and duration. We have, and I guess what I would add is that Vicky Marsh from Town Council's office recently reviewed this same bullet-pointed list and more or less reiterated those points that you have already made to the ZBA. The only area that isn't necessarily incorporated, but continues to be brought to the applicant's attention is the possibility of having some of those additional currently market rate units restricted at, call it workforce levels, such as 175% of AMI or 200% of AMI. That's something that Attorney Marsh brought up in her comments. It's something that I have brought up repeatedly to the applicants. It's something that Ed Marshant, the 40B consultant to the ZBA, brought up at the last meeting. I think they need to take a close look at their math. I think there may be an opportunity for them to do that initially. They said they had looked at it and weren't sure that the numbers would work, but I think they're in the process of evaluating that further. And I think at the next ZBA hearing, wasn't anticipated to discuss tonight, but at the next ZBA hearing, they're expected to go through their math really on that. So that's where we're at at the moment.
Yeah, I think Tucker referenced the letter we received this afternoon and some of the points that Vicky came up with, which still need to be answered. Who is the monitoring agent?
Mm-hmm.
That's referenced in there. And then who monitors the monitor? You know, who's going to watch over the monitoring agent? You know, who's responsible, who owns it in government? That's important. Define what a mission-related purpose is was another thing because that's, kind of needs to be defined. I personally think it's, you know, permanent year-round, and she outlined how you can do that. You know, it can be, there's a chapter and verse in the, that you can cite that you make, you make it permanently rather than have to remember in every 20 years or 30 years, you know, re-up it. I think if you can make it permanent, that's more important, and I would rather do that myself almost than the 175. Even though I think the 175 and 200 are important, I think having these things and knowing that we're going to have some duplexes or some, you know, some rendition there that will be year-round affordable at the right density, I hope, at some point, I think that would be, you know, a win.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I hope that we still have some work to do, but I hope we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, and so we initially had said to them, you know, let's make these year-round restrictions permanent. They had initially said, we're not sure we can do it, but more than 30 years, Attorney Marsh has, and actually at the prior ZBA hearing, Attorney Drenses, who as you know is representing the Tipping Point Group, had said, you know, he's worked in this area as well. He was happy to sit with the applicant, and the applicant did indicate a willingness to work with them on that aspect. So I think we're moving in the right direction there.
Yeah, there's buildings here on Island that came and were affordable dwellings, and now there are a million, two buildings. You know, when the guys came back from the war, all the small Sears Roebuck-type houses behind the aquarium mirror, that was affordable housing. And so it's not any longer. So I think you have to take the long view on some of this.
Absolutely.
You know, and if we're going to have employees and have places for them to live, we have to have, you know, get these permanently, or a good chunk of our housing has to be permanent. So.
Tucker, do you have an idea of who the monitoring agent would be, or is it still?
Well, Attorney Marsh was suggesting that the town hold these, could hold the permanent restriction on the year-round affordability aspect. In the case of the 80% units, it's going to be DHCD. That's their role. But for these other units, it could be the town. It is one route that she was pointing out today and forgetting the longevity of them.
My other, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to add, like, the covenant program is permanent and housing in Nantucket manages the monitoring around that. So it's not really, it's not really reinventing the wheel to do something like this.
No.
They continue to monitor it for income, so this would be even a little bit less of a burden. And one other thing that came up at the ZBA was that how is it going to be paid for? And I would just think that it would be part of the homeowners association fees.
The monitoring?
The ongoing monitoring. Sorry, I interrupted.
Oh, no, it's fine. That's a good point. My other question is just, do you know roughly, so a typical 40B would be 75-25 breakdown?
Mm-hmm.
What would something like this, what would that breakdown be?
Uh...
To market rate, to deed restricted?
So in the condominium portion, it would be the same proportion of 25% at 80% AMI, then the 75%, the rest of those units would, 100% of them would be in this program, year-round program.
So all of the condos? And then in the total units for the project, what percentage is that?
I don't think they're proposing any type of year-round restriction on the market rate cottages, as they call them. So presently, they're proposing 40 cottages, 10 of which are required to be at 80, but the other 30 would all be just open market. They could be purchased by a seasonal buyer or what have you.
Okay.
Are you looking for an overall number? 70%? 70 units out of 100 would be restricted in some way.
70 out of 100, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, in one form or another.
In this, in this proposal?
Yeah.
I think we all know that needs to be, we need to see more detail. ZBA said that, NPDDC said that, you know, I think it's heading in the right direction. But monitoring agent, how's the restrictions going to work? There's a lot of questions. The nonprofit section? I haven't really seen anything like that. What does the board think of that?
I, sorry, I was just, I was going to reiterate something that Mr. Fee said. You know, we had pointed out to them again, just as Attorney Marsh did today, that they need to have a consistent policy with respect to the nonprofits they have in there right now, that it, you know, would be either for a year-round employee of a nonprofit or other quote-unquote "mission-related purpose" that is very gray, and we've encouraged them to tighten that up a lot. Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
But the execution part, I don't think is clear yet. I mean, you and I could poke 10 holes in it right now.
We could, but again, if it is a nonprofit and someone has seasonal, you know, has seasonal people, they're putting a couple people in, or they have visiting artists or however you want to look at it, then you have a responsible person, you have an entity to go to. If there is shenanigans going on, you can, you can take care of it.
Right.
And so it's not the same as, you know, it's not the same as renting to a bunch of kids who are down here for the summer. You know, so I think, you know, I do think they can be, I think it can be sorted out because you have a responsible party to, you know.
I think what...
Exactly. They don't, and they'd fix it.
They just need to have a uniform policy for any nonprofit.
But the one thing that came up in some discussion I've heard is there's technically 400-plus nonprofits on Nantucket, and they're all not actually here. They're all not Ryan Mitchell NHA. They're ones maybe you've never even heard of that somewhat have been formed here. They could come in and, right, we don't even know. So that's where it gets a little tricky for...
Right. I mean, that's, again, attorneys are going to need to sort out, how do they direct them the way that they intend, or saying they intend to direct them? But if I could just say, of course, any letter that the select board would like to send to the ZBA, I'm sure they would find helpful. I just wanted to say that of the points that we have been discussing here, I believe that they are very much aware of these items. And again, Ed Marshant, who's advising them, is bringing these types of things up to them. So if that's helpful.
Okay. Rita, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions with the nonprofit one. Could a nonprofit that doesn't need it for a season, could they rent it to another nonprofit for a season that would need it? Is that something that...
It's a great question, and that's the type of thing that they need to think through and have provisions for and so forth.
Yeah, and my only other thought is that there's, with 400 nonprofits, obviously there's ones that are here and ones that aren't, but there are also ones that could buy a unit like that and they don't, that's sort of like needs-based nonprofits as well. So I'm just, you know, there are some nonprofits that can barely cover, you know, 20 grand for some of their development, what do you call them, directors. So again, just sort of looking at the nuances then in the nonprofit world as well and how you distribute it in a way where you're impacting the ones that really need something like this. So that's my only thought. I mean, I think this is excellent in terms of a thought process regardless of what happens because I do think, right off the bat, a 40B with 75-25 breakdown, I think we know sort of intuitively that isn't really, it's the sort of canceling itself out in terms of how it's actually impacting our affordable housing. And something I would like to see again is a development over time of guidelines for developers that actually want to do developments that are having a positive impact on affordable housing, that we have something like this to say to them before they even start. So I think this is an excellent thought process regardless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something, Don?
I was just thinking that the nonprofit, although it's a very good idea, might be a little bit overly complicated. And I know that in the past, like, I've seen a number of organizations that have assisted their directors in purchasing because these are actually going to be for sale.
Yeah.
There's no reason why a nonprofit couldn't assist that person and then have some agreement with them that if they leave, it goes on to the next person. So it might be good to take out some of the complexity and just make it year-round occupancy.
Excellent suggestion.
Especially with the limited time that the ZBA has to review all of the nuances of this. I mean, I think that this is a huge step in the right direction in ways of thinking because I agree with Rita that when there's 75% market rate with no restriction, it essentially cancels out the 25% at 80. It also, I would love to see some additional thought put into eliminating sort of weekly turnover within the entire development with its proposed density. I think that that's going to be a real burden on the neighborhood. And that's something that I had raised before. They've obviously offered that in this, but not in the cottage, in the market rate cottages. There's been no restriction. And that's actually something that we, I think with Richmond, correct me if I'm wrong, Tucker, but they can't do the shortest rental that can be done in a market rate in there, I think, is 30 days. It's definitely not a week.
That's my understanding.
Okay. So that was something that we had discussed during the Richmond MOA. So that was just something else that I wanted to raise.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an excellent point as well. In terms of as well as keeping it a community that is a good one to live in for the year-rounders, that it isn't just this constant turnover, week to week.
And something that was in the NPDDC letter that really stood out to me is that there is still not a single affordable five-bedroom proposed. They're all threes, or even a four-bedroom, right?
The affordables are all three and four bedrooms.
Okay, there are some fours, okay. But there's no fives. That was, that was what had jumped out at me.
Yeah.
Anything else for the board?
I think, are we going to write, do we think we should be, should we write a letter and reiterate some of these points, or what's the...
I'm happy to put something together for you all to review and then you could forward it on to the ZBA, whatever's helpful.
Yeah, I think that's fine. My only question is, do we want to wait until another proposal that's more detailed comes in to play?
I think you want to get some of these ideas on the table now.
Okay.
I think we should continue to update it, but what was, what happened tonight? Did they grant an extension?
Well, I had to leave before they got to that point, but it was heavily focused on architecture and the community building.
So you don't know when the next meeting is?
I'm not sure when the next meeting is yet.
So, yeah, I think we should move forward with, I saw you writing down some of Don's thoughts.
Yeah. Yep.
So just, how are you going to get at the letter then? I'm not totally clear on it. We're going to...
Tucker's going to draw.
But are you going to vote on it again, or is somebody going to be designated to sign it, or he's just going to prepare it as discussed tonight and you guys will come in and sign it?
Can you do it for next week?
12 through 19th?
So if we put on next week's agenda, so we may or may not have it in your packet. We can get it to you.
That's fine.
Yeah.
By like end of the day Monday would be fine.
Okay, so, but I'm just thinking, had to get any agenda done? So we'll put it on next week's agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the two points that sort of came out, it was, I think, 11, 11-0 or 11-1 abstention vote was density and condos are still the issue that still need to be overcome. And I think that's the, you know, among all the other details, I think that's the big picture is it's still twice as dense as beach plumbers' sachems, you know? So that, that can be overcome, I think, with different forms and different ways of doing things, and I think it would be likely supported. I think, you know, I think they could move forward fairly quickly, but I, that's, you know? So hopefully we're, some of these ideas and fixing the density will get us there. That's one of my hopes.
Thank you, Matt. I've had, well, one last comment. I wanted to applaud this board. I've seen, there's been a lot of discussion on this over the last year from a lot of different boards, and tonight we did not have a binary thinking. We could support where they're going... And tonight, we did not have a binary thinking. We could support where they're going with this for the restrictions to help out a year-round community, and still not love the project. Like, it doesn't have to be one and the same. And I've seen that with a lot of, the people to, to think about it and compartmentalize a little bit. And I think we did that very well tonight. Like, we're not saying, we're not have to be for this, but we could still make comments on the restrictions. So I just wanted to-
That's what's going on inside my head internally, though.
But thank you. Anything else on this? Tucker, you good? Thank you. Okay. Number three, continued discussion review of two thousand nineteen annual town meeting warrant articles.
So what's in your packet is outline number three. This is your third discussion about potential articles for town meeting. I have highlighted all the things that I want to tell you about or that I need action from you on. First off, so you last discussed this on November seventh. Since then, a few things have happened. On that first page there, other, so, just to reiterate, the first bunch, first, first category there of twenty-three or so articles is all the annual mostly financial-related articles that go in every year. Not a lot of discussion about those. Then we've got other appropriation or finance-related. And right now, we have the Affordable Housing Trust appropriation. So this will be in, and it's likely to, I, we haven't totally figured this out yet. It's likely to be a standalone article. However, between the Finance Director, the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and the Chairman of the Finance Committee, there is some discussion about the funding source. So more will come to you later on that. But we're working on some options for that. So that's just an update. But the idea would be to fund it at the three million number that the board talked about. Okay, next, general bylaws. That first highlighted item there is stricken. I thought I heard you all say that there, there had been, been this idea as to whether or not we needed to amend the general bylaws to incorporate this one hundred thousand dollar spending limit issue for the Affordable Housing Trust. But I think I heard people say, let's just do a written policy on that and not restrict ourselves to a bylaw.
What happens if we do a policy and it isn't followed? Is there any difference between doing a bylaw and they try not to follow it versus a policy?
Well, bylaw is a requirement that is written into the town code. So you would, in order to change it, you need a town meeting vote. In order to get it in there, you need a town meeting vote. Policy is obviously more flexible because it's adopted by the board. But if it's adopted by the board and the Affordable Housing Trust, I think it has more, you know, backbone to it. And it does take discipline of both groups to stick to it, though, I guess.
And that's, and again, just to remind the camera, I didn't support this because I, I need to see the details. And, you know, and so I would rather see it, you know, see it tighter until the details are, are presented. You know, they've had a year to do some of this work, and we're still here. And this is kind of a trust-me situation. And I think that we should, you know, we should not be operating on that level of, you know, that level.
Tucker?
Tucker Hahn, I characterized it differently, but on the point of the hundred thousand, as I was gonna say, there's no uncertainty in the part of the members of the trust fund, what their limit is. And I'm sure adopting a formal policy by the trust, if you will, if they need to, is absolutely not gonna be an issue.
And I think, I think you're correct now, but I've had trust members here arguing with me on the camera about it previously. So, you know, it, I just think that the clearer it is, the better, the more protective we are.
Couldn't agree more. And I, I'm confident the Chair and Vice Chair think exactly the same way.
Okay, next, we talked about speed limit, establishing some kind of a speed limit on electric bikes or regular bikes on bike paths. And I think BPAC is working on that.
Yeah, I'm in, I've been in contact with Mass Bike. We're kind of going back and forth.
Okay, so maybe somebody will come forward on that. And if not, it'll get worked on and we'll bring it-
I'd rest it right now. I don't think anything like that is enforceable, even if we had tons of staff to enforce it. I don't think it's enforceable, but we're kind of going through it.
Maybe it's more of an educational campaign. Roof shingles is stricken. You'll see, the Fire Chief and I talked about this. One of the issues that came up earlier from a, a board member was what is the sort of runoff impact from this type of fire retardant-treated shingles? And the chief hasn't been able to get real good data on that. So we're, the idea is put that off till we have the data. Okay, a couple of new things, or new-ish things. Potential amendment of noise bylaw to reduce the timeframe in connection with heavy construction noise. That came up at, at your alls, at a meeting of the board. And I think the proposal that I jotted down was something like a reduction from ten PM to eight PM. So that, that heavy noise wouldn't be happening, wouldn't be allowed to happen until ten PM, just eight PM. The, Dawn and I did also talk a little bit about whether or not we need to do more of a, sort of a rewrite of the noise bylaw. But that is gonna take some time, effort, public input. And so maybe this is a stopgap for now.
Can I just ask, is that heavy machinery construction noise, or?
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to, I, I didn't even really go back yet and look at the bylaw to be quite specific about that. But the general concept would be, I think, heavy machinery construction noise, like-
Exterior-
Yeah.
Heavy machinery, power tools, exterior, like, sawing at between eight, ten o'clock at night.
Inside, presumably you could have the windows closed.
We're only talking between eight and ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if, if it's, again, if is it mostly exterior heavy machinery, or is it construction work inside the house?
I was thinking a little more exterior construction work is what I've been hearing complaints about. But I didn't want it to impact things like music-
Right.
That go till ten o'clock.
Right.
So, so, we'll get a draft for you, for your future review.
Occasionally, there's, you're floating a floor, or you're doing something else that's time-sensitive, and it can be rather loud in the middle of the night, but-
And you could, someone could always come to us for a waiver.
Or they just go to the neighbor and say, you know what, I'm sorry, we're doing this. And most of the time, it's fine, but-
Yeah, no, it makes sense. Just, just wondering if it was mostly directed at the exterior as opposed to the interior.
Yes.
Okay, signs on public property. This has come up from time to time. And there is case law about, about signs on public property. And municipalities cannot regulate the content of signs. And if you're going to regulate signs, you have to have a consistent application of enforcement across the board. So that's been a little bit tricky to, to do. And basically, it's a, either you allow signs on public property, or you don't. There's not a whole lot of middle ground there. We've had some internal discussion about this, as to whether or not this could potentially be a zoning bylaw or some kind of zoning enforced item, or a general bylaw. And we, this really needs a lot of attention. So we're not really ready to put forward something this year. But it's on, kind of on your radar, putting it on your radar. We also, a couple of times now, asked the HTC Sign Group if they had any potential amendments to sign regulations or bylaws. And I, I don't get anything back from them. Internal discussion is occurring regarding the marijuana craft growing and zoning. The Planning Director and I discussed this today. We have some questions for Town Council about this, and I know it's come up here. So we're a little waiting for some answers to some legal questions. So that, that may be coming back to you with some more information.
And I think as well, myself or Matt might have some more comments on some thoughts coming from some of the growers as to how to make this work as well. I know they've been talking to Leslie and Andrew as well. So I do think there's going to be more on that, coming from the other side of it as well.
So, that, that's kind of active.
Can I just ask one question? The Contract Review Committee, the issues we had with the numbers, is that something that has to be addressed at town meeting? Because we had talked about reducing the required number of, it was Contract Review, wasn't it?
It was Council for Human Services.
Council for Human Services, yes.
And that's in here.
Okay.
To amend the quorum, amend the membership-
That's right.
From nine to seven, or maybe even five.
Okay.
Home rule petitions. I just call your attention to the fact that we thought the home rule petition to amend the membership of the Planning Commission regarding the Superintendent of Public Works was removed, but it actually is in third reading or something like that, and has not actually been approved yet, FYI. Mass general law acceptances. So we've talked a bit about the, the first one there, Municipal Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. This would require not only a town meeting vote, but a ballot vote. And we had some recent internal discussion about it, because the town of Sandwich is the first town in the state to adopt it. It is a CPA-like surcharge on the tax bills, which can be up to three percent. Sandwich adopted a two percent surcharge. And the idea of the fund that, of the fund is that that entire amount goes to water quality. And it's something to think about. It could be one percent to start out with. It could be whatever you all want. We, we probably need to run some amount of numbers on it. So the Finance Director and I have talked a little bit about it. But I think it's something to seriously think about.
I agree, and I think, but we have to look at the numbers. I think we have to look at, you know, what's the impact on an average tax bill done this way versus an average tax bill with an override to generate a similar amount? And, and look at it a few different ways. But, you know, my gut tells me it probably, it would be a positive thing to do. You know, for, for the, you know, especially for the year-round taxpayers. But we need to make sure of that.
We'll bring you back some, some-
Right. And if it doesn't pass the ballot, it doesn't, it doesn't pass.
Okay, moving on to real estate-related. There's just one sort of housekeeping thing that I rediscovered in my town meeting file, which is an easement for, with National Grid at Wait Drive. They, they require an easement to run their infrastructure onto your property. We've already given them a license, and the idea was that that would be replaced by an easement at some point, but that requires a town meeting vote. Other category, Government Study Committee. I've spoken with the Chairman of that group, and he is going to come to your meeting next week and give you a little update about what that committee is up to. But he indicates that they will not have any recommendations for the two thousand nineteen annual town meeting. Ballot questions. So we need to, at some point, sort of soon, determine whether or not the Milestone Road corridor improvement or Old South Road corridor improvement, or some combination thereof, or less, I don't know, will go back on the warrant and the ballot. I'm sure you're all working up your thoughts on that.
You all know my thoughts.
Should we put, put something forth, like just improving the existing main rotary? Like, should we break it into smaller pieces? And I, I feel like there's been confusion about new rotor, new traffic circles. And maybe we should focus on getting our current infrastructure right. Maybe it should all go back, but maybe it should be in pieces. The, the way it's written on the ballot is so problematic for people's understanding. I don't know if there's any way we can have more information on when they actually go to vote, but-
There's, there's not, as we've heard from Town Council. But, and we-
I keep looking for a way.
I think stepped up the public outreach, but, okay, I'm just gonna, gonna say this. I, I think we should reduce the scope of these projects. It's too much, even broken up into two pieces. The feedback I'm hearing is that people, I mean, I don't know that I get a tremendous cross-section of people talking to me about this stuff, but overall, I would gauge that people are not excited about them coming back as-is in the two very large projects. Although everybody acknowledges that there's an issue with traffic specifically on Old South Road. But I do hear people pick up on what Matt has been saying, what, about the, you know, downstream impact. Maybe, maybe we, either Milestone Rotary or one of the other areas gets looked at. But I don't know if maybe we want to get the modeling done that we've talked about first. I, I, I just, I don't know.
I think that would help. I think that, I think that may pass it. But I think, and I think people think that we're just being, you know, sort of pig-headed to make them vote for it. I think, you know, I think that when, they, they sort of, what I've heard is, you're not listening to us. We're saying no, you know, so-
But it, it lost by forty-nine percent, sixty ballots. Like, this isn't like, if it was ninety-ten, I'd be like, let's wait a while. But it barely lost. And I think if we would have talked about it, if we had a quorum, we would have talked about it. And I think maybe people would have had a little bit more of understanding. Maybe we would have went the other way, but they would have understood it more. So I'm, I'm for putting them both on.
As a citizen, I really want something done. But I don't know how to get that to the public. But I, what my question, and maybe Rob can answer this, he wants to come up and say something, is, is there some piece that would make a lot more sense to do in conjunction with the improvements that Richmond's doing? Like a piece that abuts that in our proposal?
So, what I can say is that certainly the, the folks involved with all of these proposals are listening loud and clear. And it may not be clear that it's a, it's a no. It's, it's been very close. The proposal we're currently working towards is a pilot, a test. Can we implement a rudimentary roundabout at the Fairgrounds, Old South area, for a period of time, for two weeks? And at the same time, correct the stop sign issue at the rotary? To see if the combination is working better, to actually have people see it, feel it, drive it, and see if it's making a change. Pull it back out, again, leave it up for two weeks, take it back out. And at least we have, everyone will have their own point of reference to, to begin further discussions on what makes sense where. So we're, we're, we're sort of sitting back and taking note of the comments and looking to bring forward a proposal that we could do in-house for a fairly low doe for a, a two-week span in the springtime, to, to do a test. And really to just let people decide for themselves based on actual physical changes.
Do you have enough space in that, in that road area?
Yeah.
See, to me, that makes, that's common sense. That makes, that's a great idea. Because it, it'll do exactly what you're talking. It'll give people, you know, an idea of whether it's really gonna work.
Sure.
Is it just gonna pile us up somewhere else? I think it would, it would answer some of that in people's minds enough that they could vote one way or the other. And if it was little dollars and not committed to millions of dollars to find out it was something that didn't work. So I, I think, I think that's, makes a lot of sense.
But do we miss putting anything on for this town meeting, if we do that? Or do we do that before town meeting and have an article on there?
I'm going back to my seat for that. You're not gonna get the answer on that one.
You don't have to decide tonight, but maybe you can confer with your constituents and come back in a few weeks and talk about it again.
We need a roundabout at Fairgrounds so, so bad. It's just, we're gonna do it at some point. We're doing it five years from now, and it'll cost thirty percent more than what, what we could do it for now.
At Old South?
Mm-hmm. Old South and Fairgrounds. The milestone one, seventy, ninety percent of it's gonna be paid for by the state. It's just upgrading.
Why we have to put that on.
It's more safe. It's better, every time I come in this, this, this intersection, I slow down like it's a rotary anyway, because there's just too much going on.
Well, maybe the milestone is the one, maybe the milestone's the one we do, because you can say, it's there anyway. We have, we get X amount from the state. You know, if we're gonna-
It's not adding a new.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It's not adding something new. It's already there. And, and I think maybe that's one that we could, you know, if we, if you, if it really set on putting it forward, that's one we probably could do.
I don't feel comfortable bringing it back as-is, based on what I've heard. I think the milestone makes sense because, especially because of the state funding and not missing out on that in any way. I think Rob's idea is fantastic. And because of what he's done at the dump, I have faith that he can also do this one. Timing-wise, I, I think people do need to be convinced. And I think bringing it back, even if any one of us thinks it really has to happen, I, I just don't know what the reception would be. I don't think it would be positive.
I do love the idea of trying things out. I mean, I, I just don't think people remember what the intersection used to be like at Sparks and Hooper Farm. I mean, I know it still backs up, but it's like seventy-five percent better than what it was before. I mean, I know it still backs up, but it's like, oh, 75% better than what it was before with more traffic than there was back then.
I also think that particular intersection for bikes is, feels very unsafe. And I think anything we can do to improve that. And like you said, something that adds on to, I would love to see the modeling that Matt talks about, and I think that would help. I don't know if, that's something that we would want to put money towards. But I think tacking on to the developments, the improvements Richmond is going to make would also make sense. And again, anything that increases bike safety would be a more obvious one to pursue.
I mean, I think we need a bike path slash sidewalk down Newtown Road that keeps people out of the main rotary intersection entirely. Which, that's the, that's the way I go with my kids. If I'm coming milestone, we go over to Fairgrounds and then down to Hooper Farm.
But most tourists who go to Surfside go to the rotary. They go down fair, you know, they go down Old South Road and Fairgrounds. So just, you know, like, you guys heard me say this on a broken record, it's not just about cars. It's pedestrians, it's bicycles. And I know, a couple million dollars, five million dollars, just for pedestrians and bicycles is, is a lot of money. But it's all over our strategic plan. We want people to drive less, so our infrastructure has to be better. It might not be politically or smart to put it back on this one, and we're having that discussion. But I'm, I just, I just want to keep moving forward and try to keep explaining it. And if we can, then we'll use tip money, state money, and not go to, not go to the town meeting, let's do it that way.
I think you have to go to town meeting, though, to get, you, you have to.
The rideaways and.
The, well, you have to put up the appropriation and that's a reimbursable grant.
Right.
But it, it's reimbursable, so.
Right.
Yeah.
At least it's say that the, the money's there, tax bill not, not gonna go up, which will take away from somewhere else, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure what year this was in the tip, or if the state has signed off on, you know, we're definitely getting the money for the Milestone Rotary, so I can follow up on that.
I'd like to see something that incorporates the, improving the existing rotary and anything that would be more critical to do at the same time that Richmond's doing their improvements. And maybe beyond that, but at a minimum, that's, I'd like to see a proposal like that.
I'm buying, I'm finding a milestone. You guys know I want it, I want to keep going forward, all of it. I understand Rita, you're like, mm, not Old South Road, not, not yet. And, and, and if, if these did pass, this, this past special town meeting, they wouldn't be built at the same time anyway. They'd be phased and staggered. So if we got the Milestone Road, you know, get that going, yeah.
I do think you're right, that the fact that it wasn't discussed at town meeting did probably impact the vote. I don't know how, by how much. And I, I think I just, I do feel uncomfortable bringing it back as is, even though we could explain saying, well, we didn't get a chance to. I think, I just hear a lot of people being very upset about the improvements and the possibility of it, for whatever reason. So again, I just feel being responsive to that and trying to find a way to make it palatable and to show that it would work. So something like the pilot rotary makes a lot of sense to me.
I'll try to gather a little more information for your, next meeting with timing and state plans and stuff like that.
And would Mike Burns have any thoughts on how to break this down again?
Yeah, he, he'll have some suggestions. I can bring up a BPAC too, we can talk about it in that group.
Yeah, and maybe looking at it, really focusing on that bike and pedestrian safety even more, because I think we are still focusing on the cars and the impact, but.
Yeah, we don't have BPAC, we all, it's, we did look at all of these and really put our two cents in and saw that it would help that, those two modes.
Okay, next, there's a, a large sort of highlighted stricken section. This all had to do with the relocation of the polling place and the possibility of a non-binding ballot question. But you all said negative on that, so that's out. And then just an FYI that the 31 citizen articles are in, they are on the town website. We just received town council's review of them. I think I've ordered that around, we'll get that onto the website at some point soon as well. And your next update will probably be early, probably at your first meeting in January, the 9th. You're scheduled right now to adopt the warrant on the 16th. And hopefully that will be the date, but if need be, we may have to go to the 23rd. But probably not too much later than that.
Remind me, the timeline for the marijuana, there was something at the bottom that said, because of this, we might have to adopt the, you know, town meeting warrant on the 30th.
Oh, that's right, I did say that. Because what I meant was, a lot of time is going to have to be spent on the marijuana review and the HCA and all of that. So depending on how much time that all takes, the preparation of the warrant might be delayed. That's what I meant.
I think the warrant takes precedent over the RFQ.
Okay.
Would you agree?
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
The warrant, that's, that's everything.
Yeah, it's kind of the biggest thing they do.
The community has to understand that we have put an enormous amount of time and effort into marijuana.
Yeah, pushing our, the review committee pushing that part of the process a week or two
Yeah.
to get the warrant done.
Absolutely.
Time is the way to go.
And my only other comment, we had the draft zoning articles, we don't have to discuss them. But there is, it will be interesting, because some of these are RC2 to commercial neighborhood. And I think we should have a, we should say, are these gonna be, you know, eligible as marijuana locations? You know, and we should be, you know, sort of recognize that that may be what is happening. You know, so, you know, and maybe they're undersized and they won't be, be able to be used for that. Great, tell us. But if that, you know, if that's what's going on, you know, because remember, we changed something to commercial industrial or somewhere in a whole neighborhood came in, in the air in an uproar. The last thing we want to do is support something like this and have the whole neighborhood come in and go, what did you do to us? You know, so there's more in, involved in this now in that zoning district than just square feet and ground cover, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to follow up on that point.
If people don't agree with me, then say they don't agree, but I think that's.
No, I think you want, you want to know what, what can now be in that location, like a change.
Yeah, what impacts are you, yeah.
But of course, RC2 is being phased out entirely, and it should be.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I agree with that.
And there are other serious impacts from some of those zoning articles that are already creating a lot of issues of non-conformities.
On some of these already.
On some of the other things that are in there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Anything else from us? Okay, comments, reports? Nothing?
I have none.
Nothing?
I attended WPI, doing their, what do you call it, the build-out count, which was very interesting. I think it's gonna come here, so I'm not gonna, you know, sort of go crazy about it, right, today or, you know, but I think that in a short period of time, those guys did a really pretty good job. In six or seven weeks, they did, they did what it took us a couple of years to do back in the old days. There's still some, you know, it's gonna be a very conservative number. It didn't include tertiary or commercial and some other things. So there has some limitations to it. But I think overall, it's, you know, it, it's gonna be, it'll be an interesting discussion. The other thing, sort of, we can, back in the day, it was eight to 10,000 homes. We were talking about, you know, 20 years ago or so. And people said, that'll never happen, that's not the number. And we've built 200 and, oh, 2,000 plus. Since then, this number is looking about, to be about six, six to eight, if you add some stuff in, which sort of sounded about right, based on what it was previously. And so the interesting part from, for us, as, from a policy perspective is, you know, 5,000 homes is another 10,000 cars. You know, is the island up to that? You know, or if not, what do we do and where do we do it? I mean, I think that, though, we should be, you know, hopefully, we can get to that sort of policy level and big level picture. You know, how much pollution is that, how many vehicles is that, how can we handle that? You know, hopefully, you know, having this and having some of the, you know, sort of the finances in place that we didn't have before and, you know, and, and some of the DPW and other people in place that we didn't have before, hopefully we'll be able to start to really look at some of these things and begin to point the island in the right direction. And I hope that this does that, so we'll see.
Yeah, just to echo that, and their presentation will be next Tuesday, noon to 12:30. Short amount of time for the amount of information they had. And they have really refined the project over the six weeks. And there are some exclusions, they've been clear about those. But I really think it is a fantastic foundation for, for looking at what these numbers could be and then identifying where some of that growth will happen in a way where we can really look at it through the lens of sewer, waste generation cars. And so, you know, each of the department heads can, I think, pick apart this and look at the numbers and see how we could use this in the future. Something I would really like to see is their recommendations on how this can be something where it doesn't take six truly data nerds in the best way, six weeks to get all this information. How can we have this in a spreadsheet and a template where we can use this as a reference point going forward and test our assumptions and see how different policy, different zoning changes are shifting that number? And then how we then change or look at our policy and review that? So I, I think there's a lot more to come from this, but some great information that they've put together. So if you get to see it, and hopefully we'll be talking about it more.
I said two, two small things, I wanted to applaud the DPW, whatever crew did the work at the Silver Street and Pleasant Street, where the structure used to be, the old, whatever that was, that's cleaned up.
DPW did, and I watched them, yeah.
It looks really good.
It looks great.
So, nice job there. And then if, if you, if we do end up doing in the spring this kind of faux rotary to get an idea of what that feels like, I think in the middle of it should be maybe a statue of our finance director for this 3A Moody's in the middle. I just think that, you know, with, you know, saying, nice job, finance department.
Out of clay, or what, what will we do?
Well, I think, I don't, I'm not, I'm not creative one, so.
Isn't it Billy Sherry that does the sculptures? Give that to him, this is his next idea.
Do we need a motion on, no, I'm kidding.
Are we gonna, are we gonna install the chair as a speed bump or what's the?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Be happy to do that.
Perfect.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Second? Aye?